So the time is 7:01 PM on February 8th, 2022. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Select Board for the town of Hingham. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording this evening's meeting? Seeing none, I will note for the record that members of the Select Board participating this evening are Bill Ramsey, Liz Klein, and myself, Joe Fisher. The first item on our agenda is to consider approval of minutes for January 25th and February 1st, 2022. I am prepared to proceed. Liz?
I'm prepared.
And Bill?
Right.
Then I'll accept the motion for the January 25th minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minute dated January 25th, 2022.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Next for February 1st.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated February 1st, 2022.
Second.
A roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Minutes approved. We now move to a joint session with the Advisory Committee and the School Committee, and I will ask the Advisory Committee to call itself to order.
Thanks, Joe. I call the Advisory Committee meeting to order for February 8th, 2022 at 7:03 PM, adopting the remote meeting, open meeting law language read by Select Board Chair Fisher.
And I now call on Carrie Nie for the School Committee.
Thanks, Joe. I call the February 8th meeting of the School Committee to order at 7:03. I adopt the statement of the chair and would note that my colleagues, Michelle Eyre, Jen Benham, Ness Corente, Carlos De Silva, Tim Milligency, and Liza O'Reilly are participating remotely.
Thank you. We move now to the Fiscal Year 2023 Preliminary Financial Forecast Update to be presented by, at least initially, by Tom Mayo, and then you can introduce your cast of characters for describing the forecast.
They are quite a cast of characters as well.
They are.
I will call on Michelle Montegier and Sue Nickerson as needed and ask them to jump in again as you guys see, as you folks see something you'd like to say. So we're going to start with the traditional forecast document. This is what I think everyone is used to seeing. We will, we will come back to this in a couple of minutes on one of the items, but I wanted you to see that the forecast document is being updated as we go through these processes as we do every year. I won't hide the ball. Thank you, Michelle. This forecast is forecasting a current deficit of $4.7 million. That's down from, I believe, 7.2 in the first forecast, so trending in the right direction as we always are during this stage. This is our second forecast update. We generally do about three or four of these during the course of a fiscal year as the budget process, as more information becomes available, we will update the forecast and present it. This is a live, living, and moving document, so bear that in mind as we walk through these forecast updates over the next few weeks. So we've attempted to make this process a little bit more easily consumed by folks watching. So Michelle, if you want to jump over to the other slide that you made to help everybody understand what we're talking about, some of the lines in the forecast document, we have translated the yellow lines into, into this document to highlight the changes over the prior forecast. So I will start with the tax levy. The tax levy change, there's just about a $4,000 line, line change there. That just represented the FY22 actual tax levy. So we made that adjustment and it came out to just about $4,000. The state aid, this budget is now up by about $165,000. This is purely the, the results of the governor's budget, and the state legislature, as you know, is still to, to present its budget, and then the governor would then have to sign a new final budget. So there's still a couple of steps left till we have a new final one, but the state legislature is generally, historically anyway, in the last several years, been higher than the governor's budget, so I don't expect that number to go down by much. But right now, it's up by 165 grand. Local receipts. So I told you I would jump back to the forecast document. I'm going to do that once, and I'm going to do it right now, and then we will come back to this slide again in an effort to make it clearer for folks. Michelle's going to open that up and then go to slide, page four of that document for the 10-year history of local receipts. So if you look on this document, we've made three changes to the 10-year history of local receipts. The first and perhaps most impactful is the $4.9 million now projection of motor vehicle excise tax, and that is because we've now received the new commitment from our town treasurer, Jean Montgomery, and this is the number that she is recommending as of now, $4.9 million, $4,940,000. That is up from, from our prior, our prior forecasted number. The other excise column, our line, is that's a $35,000 bump up. What we had discussed was moving the half of, so we are statutorily required by mass law to apply half of all boat excise tax to a waterways fund every year. We had, we've always done that. In recent years, we've applied the other half of the boat excise tax also to the waterways fund in an effort to fund the, once a decade, I forget the term for that, but once a decade dredging effort that the town has to make. We have done some initial calculations, and we believe even with inflation that our, our, the manner in which we fund that waterways fund will be sufficient to fund the, to pay for the dredging efforts in now eight years without this additional $35,000 each year. So I added it back. It's a, it's, it's another revenue piece. This, I would say this falls under the category of no stone unturned and every dime mattered. So $35,000 is $35,000, and we wanted that in the local receipts column if we could.
Tom, if I can just interrupt, so the word you were looking for was decennial.
Decennial.
And just so we're clear, so in the prior version of the budget, we saw that number was zero, and now it's 35.
That's right.
Okay. Please, sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 thank you. I figured you would know that word, Joe. How did I know that? Okay, so the meals tax, the, we're now projecting this at 800,000. We had projected it at 600,000 prior to this, and that was in response to our moving, just simply doing what we had done last year, which was a pandemic-related assessment of what we expected from meals tax. Our first two quarters came in at something that we believe would warrant an $800,000 forecast now. So we bumped that up to pre-pandemic levels, and we're comfortable with that for now. That's one of these items that may continue to, to evolve as we go through these, through these new iterations of the forecast document here over the next few weeks. Okay, so that's all for local receipts, and I just wanted to highlight those and show you that. If you know, there's a 10, $10,203,000 total number for local receipts on that page, and that will, if you're looking back on these slides, that 10, 203 is right there now in our current forecast for local receipts. So jumping down to the next line, fund balance and federal funds, we are moving this line from, up by $983,000. That's up from 800,000 where it was at the last forecast. The main components of that are, we are combining all use of ARPA money, of, with the exception of the Plymouth County ARPA money, in, as well as $400,000 of ESAR money into the FY23 category for one-time funds, for fund balance slash federal funds. We've renamed that from fund balance just because this is our slot for one-time money, and it's truly not fund balance, it's actually federal funds. So right now, there are no fund balance dollars in that number, it's purely federal funds. That 1.783 million, that is purely federal funds. So jumping down to the next line, the Weir River Water System, this is a change, this is a budget refinement. Their budget is reporting down by 200 grand over the prior year, but that's a wash in the uses that would come out from below. I'll mention that again in a minute. It's an enterprise fund, so that does not impact the bottom line. The state assessments under uses, jumping down from revenues to uses, state assessments are to the, so I'm going to, Michelle and I were talking about this because we didn't, you know, you end up with a double negative. We just wanted to explain, any text in black in that end column is, is good for the budget. Okay? I don't want to get confused with, with double negatives there. So the state assessments have come down by $64,745. So again, that's a result of the governor's budget. Article six is down by about $497,000 in this forecast, and that's a result of both the water company I mentioned above, but also some refinements and the school's full true request now. There's no, it's down because we had, we were projecting a higher number than what they came in at. So this number, 136, 816, 377, represents the full school request. And then Articles 4 and 5, this is, this number is down quite a bit, but it's, it's being reallocated, just so you know, up in the Article 6 number. These are the CBAs, the collective bargaining agreements that have been settled, and they were in time for, to update the Articles, Article 6, so we just wanted to make sure we did that. So that's the result, the end result of all of that brings us to a shortfall now with 4.7 million. Again, that's down from 7.2, trending in the right direction. I will say, I'm going to ask Michelle to go to another slide that we've created. So there are some additional adjustments I think we can all expect over the next two forecast releases. This is, these are a number of categories of expenses, or excuse me, of revenues that will change, revenues and expenses that will change over the coming, the coming weeks. The first is, and I spoke about this, the final state aid number, as the legislature completes their, their work, that number will be refined. I think that there's still some room to refine the local receipts effort. We just went through some of that, you just saw. I think there might be some, as myself and the finance team get together and we look closer at some of those numbers, we'll be able to refine some of that. I think the, the Board of Selectmen will be discussing use of stabilization, and there might be some new, new ways to utilize a stabilization fund that has come out of the work that's, the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force put together. The Board of Assessors has yet to meet to discuss their process and what they intend to release from their excess overlay account, and that's money again, so folks know that overlay is the term that we use for funds that are used to fund, to pay for abatements from residents. So they, they're, and they're allocated a certain amount each year, the Board of Assessors are for that purpose, and then if any money goes unused, it builds up and gets released back into the budget. So the Board of Assessors will be assessing that in the near future. The, obviously, AdCom will now be taken up. We're going to hear the school's budget presentation tonight. You'll also be getting my recommendations or, or priority order of my additional requests will be coming tonight, and all of that is stuff that the, is information that the Advisory Committee will use in its review of the budget, the budgets as they're presented. And then, of course, every year, health insurance. I think we all know we projected 10% growth over the prior year. The last couple of years, we've not realized that full 10%, so those expenses should come down, which will be helpful. We just don't know yet how much that will, that will be. We won't know that likely until the beginning of March. I would say local receipts, refinement, stabilization, and excess overlay, hopefully we will know in the next week or two, and the final state aid number, you know, that's up to the legislature when they get, are able to finish that work. So there is some more information coming in the near future, and I think some of it will be coming a little bit later, like I said, the beginning of March, and then we will, we will get to the point where we have a new final forecast. I will tell you all that in some of my work here, I do see, in fact, a path to a balanced budget that does not include the use of an override in FY23. I know that that's something that we had anticipated at the end of last year. There are significant, as you just saw, significant new federal funds available we're going to be able to utilize, and again, the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force identified some other new ideas for use of revenue that we're trying to take advantage of. So all I believe is good news, as 4.7 is still a big scary number. We have to, you know, recognize that, but I do find, I do see a path to a, to a balanced budget without an override this year. I think that we would likely need something next year, but that is the size to be determined, and, and the appropriate use of fund balance along the way, and how we fund articles, all of that stuff as well is, is still to be determined. But anyway, Joe, I'll turn it back to you.
That was excellent. Before I open up to questions, I wanted to ask Michelle Montegier if there's anything that she wanted to add, and then I'm going to ask Sue Nickerson if there's anything that she wanted to add.
Thank you, Joe. I think Tom did a good job covering it.
I certainly agree too.
Okay, then I will start with Liz Klein.
Thank you, Tom. Great explanation. It does seem like it's, it's moving in the right direction, so that's very promising. No real questions, just, I guess, some, some comments. Tom mentioned the, the one-time funds, the federal funds or the ARPA and the ESAR, which we'd like to use this year, I think. I know you didn't go over license and fees, but the building permits are up a little bit, so that number, I think, increased. And then the stabilization fund, that is something that came out of our task force work to look into if there's other uses for that as opposed to the traditional allotment each year. So hopeful that that will be, you know, a significant number for us. Yeah, that, that looked great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Liz. Bill Ramsey?
Tom, thank you. Obviously, some good news here. A couple of questions for you. I thought I heard you say you anticipate state aid going down. I would anticipate it going up.
I'm sorry, state aid will go down. The, if I said that, I apologize. The, the aid itself will become, will be going up. It went up by 165,000 with the governor, and it should go up again when the state legislature finishes its, its work. You're right. Yep.
It will go up a little, yeah, it will go up a lot, but it will go up a little bit, right?
Yeah, I would expect. It usually does.
About 165, you think, maybe two? Okay. You know, so you're pat, you anticipate the path to the balanced budget to fill the 4.7, you anticipate that we'll need fund balance to help fund that gap?
Do not.
Too far out yet?
Yeah, no, well, it's a little bit far out, and there's still some decisions to be made there. Remember also that there's another 1. something million dollars of ARPA money, additional ARPA money that is not included in that line right now that we have available to us for things like infrastructure projects that, that the federal government has provided us. So that is also available for further use. I think that we will not have to use fund balance on, to balance the budget this year.
Okay. And you know, the last issue I've been meaning to talk to you about, I keep forgetting, the Article 4 and 5 expenses, I know that we still have one CBA outstanding. Will that, would that still impact this year, or will that cross over into next year?
Sue, you want to take that?
Well, it all depends when, when they settle.
Okay.
But yes, I presume they will settle before June 30th of '22. I'm hoping. So yes, but what will happen is I will take Article 4 money out and put it to their, the DPW budget. So it really will have no, as long as, it depends on what they settle on.
So June, but Sue, June 30th is, is the date there that would cause it to impact this budget opposed to next budget?
Right.
Okay. All right. Awesome. All right. Thanks. Thank you, Tom. Thanks, Sue.
You're welcome.
So Tom, that's a great presentation. I really appreciate being able to look at the last forecast compared to this forecast to see the trend and really to see the approach that you're, you're taking to the extent that there are funds available other than restricted funds that we can apply them and to lessen the tax burden for this, this coming year. So I definitely, I see where you're going. I will, at this point, turn it over to Julie Straley for the Advisory Committee.
Thanks, Joe. So Advisory Committee members, does anyone want to raise hand and ask a question?
Okay, seeing none, next. Oh, sorry, do we need to wait?
Everyone a second to get warmed up, Tom. Anyone from Advisory Committee? I know you're just looking at the numbers.
And this will not be their only time to ask questions, where as we go through, there may be other opportunities.
I see Dave.
Tom, thanks for that. I really appreciate it. Just a quick question. You mentioned that the, and I should know this because someone named Dave Anderson is, I think, the liaison for the water company budget, but I'm just curious, if, if there's a revenue offset, it's not a dollar-for-dollar change in the expenses, right? Because it's not a fully variable expense reduction, is it?
That's how we do the forecasting.
Sorry, say it again, Sue.
That's what we do in the forecast, just because.
Oh, you just match it?
Yes, because if, if they, if their revenues are more than their expenses, that goes to their fund balance, not ours.
Got it. Okay. So you, for you, as a forecast, you just match revenue or expenses? And then let the chips fall where they may. Got it? Okay. Thanks, that helps.
Same thing with the country club in sewer.
Bingo. Thank you, Sue. One of these days, seven years in, I'll figure this out.
Anyone else from Advisory? We will have the opportunity to ask Sue questions in future meetings, for sure.
Hi. Sorry, I don't have my camera on right now. I just had a quick question, and probably everyone understands except me. Who, who participates in the pilot program, the payment in lieu of taxes?
Sure. So the one that you're seeing in here, that's a, it's in essence a pilot program almost exclusively. All those dollars are with the Blue Cross Blue Shield for their facility down in South Hingham.
Okay. Thank you.
I think you, Tom. I just have a clarifying question. It seems like the path forward, a lot of the options you were talking about were increases in revenue. Does it also includes, include some tightening of the expenses as well, or do you think you, the path forward is really on the revenue side?
So when I say I see a path forward to a balanced budget, that is assuming some level of, of potential cuts. It's also assuming some, when I say cuts, I mean cuts to the additional requests, not cuts to the core services or even the level services. But, you know, I, that's the way I see it, Caitlin, that's, that's AdCom's job, is to suss all that out and determine what's the appropriate amount to, to fund. So I don't want to go down that path just because it's not my role. I would say that I put forward all of my additional requests, and Gary does the same on the school side, and, and what gets funded, gets funded. But as of right now, I, I see a fairly, a fairly robust path towards, towards a fully, a fully funded budget.
Great. Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from Advisory?
Julie, then I'm going to move forward with the School Committee and ask Carrie Nie to recognize any members of her committee.
Thank you, Joe and to Tom for, for that report. Does anyone in the School Committee have any questions? If you could use the raise hand function. Hey, I'm not seeing any, so I just want to comment. I agree with everyone else, this is a good trend, and thank you for all the work you're putting into it.
You're welcome.
Hello?
Sorry.
I couldn't get the function quick enough, so I apologize. Good evening, everyone. Two questions, Tom. I'm familiar with the county ARPA fund, but I'm not familiar with the state one. What, what is that number for the state?
The, the state, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm following you.
I'm going to answer.
Yeah, go ahead, Michelle.
So there's two buckets of ARPA money that the town's able to access. One is a direct allocation from the state, and we got about $1.2 million in the first tranche this past June, and we're expecting another 1.3-ish million, million this coming June. That's, that's the state ARPA money that Tom's referring to, sort of the town's main allocation. There's also 1.1 million available through Plymouth County for the town, but it's not, it's not a direct mechanism, so we have to do that more on a reimbursement basis the way we did CARES.
Great. And the second question is, so as, as it stands right now, the shortfall is 2.546, is that right?
4.7.
That, that was the diminution in the shortfall compared to the last forecast.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I saw that the total on the positive side there, so. Great, thank you. Keep up the great work.
I don't see any other hands for us.
Well, they know the School Committee is going to be up next, so they're holding. Are there members of the public with questions specifically on the presentation that the I am not seeing hands raised, so I'm going to move then to the Fiscal Year 23 School Department Budget Presentation. I believe we have our interim superintendent, and I will ask you to begin and introduce whom you would like to speak.
Tab. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for participating tonight, and this is a really important night for everyone. It's something that we've been preparing for, for quite some time, starting probably in October. So tonight, I'll just give a brief overview on how we started billing the budget, and then I'll turn it over to John Ferris. You know, I think this year's budget, just like most, are, it's challenging putting a budget together, especially when you are trying to be cognizant of the needs of the town, especially after the bulk of COVID and revenues that are, that towns are not realizing because of what happened during COVID. So we did get some aid, which actually helped the School Department last year to introduce some staffing positions, which has been a successful implementation for the school district, and that's been a very positive move for the district. But as far as building the budget, one of the things that we were trying to do as we were looking at a goal of, of trying to present a School Committee budget that was moved forward and approved by the School Committee last night was to really take a look at how we could present a responsible budget that was taken into consideration a number of economic conditions of the community. One of them, the School Department is looking for a potential build of Foster Elementary, and that building is going to be an expensive project. Looks like town meeting will be taking this up sometime next year, and that will be of significant consideration. And as we build the budget, we want to be cognizant that there might be a potential override, and that's something that we were uncertain of when we were actually building the budget. So we were looking at foster, potential override, and I think the next piece behind our budget development process was, you know, we're in the middle of developing our strategic plan for the school district. It'll be a three-year plan that will really set the course for the school district. We're in that process now, and some of the items are the items And some of the items are the items that uh, will uh, be demonstrated as areas of need. Um, and, and the pillars of, of work that will be uh, established moving forward have not yet been established. And that's one of the things that we were um, really cognizant and of building a budget that um, didn't encompass uh, or, or would encompass things that really weren't, wouldn't be in the strategic plan moving forward. So one of the things that we did is um, we are putting some of those potential items in abeyance for future budget development years. Uh, and they will uh, parallel the, the strategic plan uh, moving forward. I've had the pleasure of uh, in the, in the, in the five months that I've been, um, almost six months that I've been uh, interim here in, in Hangham, uh, of working with uh, John Ferris. John has been a valuable resource to the School Department for, for many years. And um, his uh, commitment and dedication to uh, this year's budget has been um, commendable. But I would also like to mention that this is his last budget building season for Hangham. And I'd like to recognize his efforts. Um, and I'd like to just take a moment to, to, to thank him for everything he's done for me, but more importantly, for the community for the years he's been here. So John, this is for you. John is uh, probably one of the most humble individuals I've met. Um, but he's all Hangham, he's all in, trying to establish a benchmark uh, for the next superintendent. He's been working diligently behind the scenes with his staff to do um, a, a job that can be um, you know, a, a budget that can be lived up to. So uh, with that said, I'll turn the presentation over to John. He has a few slides to share with um, the different boards tonight to give you highlights of um, the budget development process, uh, what's moving forward and actually what the total budget is um, projected for next year. So John, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Gary. Um, so I'm going to uh, give a brief presentation and then um, we'll make some time for discussion. And um, these are, the, the presentations, and a number of you may have the presentation. Um, and then some of the uh, the ACES members, your members, uh, you, you have the shared drive, so this is all, also in the shared drive. And um, I'm not sure if Heather's got it up on the website yet, but this will certainly be posted on the uh, Hangham website uh, in the budget documents. There's uh, Hangham Schools website on the budget documents. There's um, plenty of documents up there and all the details that go behind this for the most part are up there as well. So I'm going to share my screen here and hope that it works correctly. Okay, let's see. So let's move this over here. Okay, so um, is everybody, are you seeing Hangham Public Schools 2023 Budget, February 8th, 2022, I hope? Okay. Alrighty, and uh, question is, are you seeing a scroll? Is there a scroll there too? All right, good. Okay. All right. So hopefully I'm, I'm in good shape right now. Okay, so this is the joint budget presentation, February 8th, 2022. Um, and what we'll do tonight is so we'll uh, take it, we'll review the School Department Budget Proposal. We'll allow some time for questions and discussion and um, we'll discuss the overall budget proposal and consider future timelines um, for the warrant hearing votes and the budget vote dates. School Committee did vote this budget last night, so um, here's the highlight. Um, hopefully you can see it well enough. But the, the bottom line budget that was proposed and um, also that the School Committee voted last night after the budget hearing is $62,677,112. That's a dollar increase of $885,000, $885,054, and that's up 1.43%. Um, we blow up the components in this in other slides, but you can just see regular education is up 3.3%, but special education has a big drop uh, of 4.18%, and we'll explain why that happens later on in the presentation. And VOTEC um, enrollment right now is down a couple, so we see a drop right now for VOTEC of uh, 36,277 or 1.7, uh, 17.10%. So enrollment trends, you know, the enrollment is the first start of building any budget. We take a look and, and make a projection out of what the enrollment will be. These are enrollment trends for many, many years. Um, the past two years, we've uh, in 2021. And these are based on October 1 counts. Uh, so this would be October 1, 2020, and this one's October 1, 2021. So this is really the fiscal '21 year and this is a fiscal '22 year, so um, enrollment's down to uh, 3871. That's pre-K, 2K, so that includes a pre-K uh, program as well. And I like to put the, this slide in here too. So it, this answers questions on how do I project enrollment? When I project enrollment, I don't look a lot in migration and out migration. That would be people that move into town, people that move out of town. But um, and, and for many, many years, that, that tracking has worked um, very fine. Uh, we basically hold the pre-K at around 75. We hold kindergarten um, at, at fairly constant, but we actually added a little bit this year because we're hoping that enrollment is going to start coming back up. Because we had the dip last year, uh, you know, we had a, a phenomenon for years prior to having a full day program in kindergarten where the kindergarten class would be one size, but by the time they got into the first grade, we could go up in 40 people in the first grade, 40 students. Um, you know, that was happening before we had full day K and, and I think the, the guess or the, you know, i- and it always was, you know, somewhere in the 30 to 40 that we had the increase. And when we got full day K, that dramatically dropped. So, but um, you know, this year, because we did have that drop, I've added five to kindergarten figure from last year. And then after that, we just step them up. So first grade becomes second grade, second grade becomes third, et cetera, et cetera. The fifth grade graduates to the middle school. Um, and you know, so 295 comes over to sixth grade. And then of course, the, the eighth grade here graduates over to the high school. So it's just a, a, a plain step up after you make your basic set of assumptions of hold pre-K constant. Uh, hold K constant normally if we were in a regular year, but I'm projecting a growth year and stuff. Uh, and then hold first, and then step up kindergarten into first grade with a, a slighter increase. Like in, we used to go maybe two or three. Instead of this year, I went five, because I do think that we're going to have um, students come back. So I think that our, our pre-k, uh, kindergarten figures this year are deflated to 62. For years, we were targeting, we were in the, say, we were probably at 290 to 305. And I do believe not next year, but I think in time, I think that number's going to start coming back up. So, so you see the assumptions that I used here. And I just put this here, so if anybody wants to study on how we go about projecting enrollment, that's it. It's, it's not rocket science, but um, for years, it's worked. Let's hope it starts working again. It's hard to project in migration, out migration. And um, you know, we've had a little upset. So the other assumption we make here too is typically when they, when the students come from um, fifth grade to uh, middle school, we're projecting a loss to private, because I think BC started seventh grade, NDA's got seventh grade. So some of the kids will leave to private when they get to the middle school. And then again, we project a loss to um, private when they come out of middle school, going to the high school. Um, taking a look at uh, special ed, here's what special ed enrollment looks like. So you can see that here is 21. We've had a spike in special ed kids. These are all full inclusion, so they're in our schools, but um, you know, they're all in IEP. So you can um, you know, that really means that you have extra special ed services going on and you have more attention. Um, and you, you need to have staff in order to, to handle the load. And then you can see here, this is what's really um, the driving decline in, in special ed, that decline in um, enrollments or out of districts from 53 down to 42. And you know, that's nine, uh, that's nine students. That's a lot of stu- That's um, no, that's 11 students. That's a lot of students, uh, because the tuitions are big money. What I put in here uh, in this presentation, so this is our enrollment as of January. So you can see where we are in any individual schools and you can see the number of sections. Okay, I just wanted to provide that information so you have detail in the presentation later as you're going through the document. The VOTEC, here is a 20, but we have enrolled right now in 2022. Um, you know, four at South Shore, VOTEC, uh, five at North Fork Aggie, got a couple graduating. And then seven left that were presumed returning and will be enrolled, and they are. And then we have four applications pending. Now, the chances are, one, you know, one or two of these may hit, possibly all four may hit. It all depends on how their enrollment is and how they're uh, you know, going to fear for next year. So uh, we probably won't know that until sometime in March or sometime in um, you know, early April. Usually we know probably by around March. And, and they still have their applications open, so these um, pending applications, they could increase between now and then. Um, and, and if you're looking at the, you know, the possible risk, any, for, for rounded figures, just say 22,000 per. So you know, this is an $88,000 risk here for the most part, to just try to give you some perspective if you're trying to see what that actual risk is. This, someone is a, it's just blown up budget and you can take a look at the individual components here to see how um, the, the individuals increased. There's details uh, in the uh, budget detailed document. So each one of these categories might have five, 10, 15, sometimes 20 lines that may build up to make these totals. This projects out the regular education. When you look at the professional development, that's not to, it's in regular education, but a lot of that um, we, we, we train our special edut, education teachers as well as our regular education teachers. And this is all contracted money um, or other, you know, types of money that we use for professional development. In addition to that, there's grant money that isn't reflected in here. There's typically uh, the grants, we, we use grants as offsets, but we don't spend 100% of the grants. We leave some in reserve and that reserve amount also goes to professional development and other products and sort of others, other supplies and other um, training that may be necessary for teachers or, and staff. Technology over the years, we've had a little bump up, little down this year. You know, you see that we did grow. A lot of it had to do with the COVID and us increasing our technology, so that's up, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And you know, I think we, we need to be realistic that that's never going to go away. Why is it down 775? What I try to do is I take the information I have, I know the licenses, I take the information the field gives me, I add it up. It's down $7,000. Uh, no reason, just, you know, there's multiple licenses that might be, you think of the Microsoft license, the Adobe licenses, the other things we need to, to load on computers to make them work. Um, in the old days, you used to have a disk and you could load them on, you know, thousands of computers. Now they're all online, so they know exactly what you have. So there's always a good accounting of those things. These are, you can see all of these are people intensive for the most part, with the exception of the, you know, textbooks, instructional equipment. Instructional technology does have personnel in it, but you know, everything else is personal, is, is people intensive, custodial. You got the heating of the buildings, uh, utilities, the maintenance of the grounds. The heating of the buildings and the utilities, we know that um, costs are up. The, so they, you know, those are based on, I went back to 19 usage because 20 wasn't so, a, a good year because we had a, we, we were cut short by three months. But we'll take that, the 19 usage and project that out based on the, the current rates, uh, our best estimates for, you know, where our energy prices will be for the next year and project those out. So you see there increase them, you know, $90,000, uh, or $62,000. Let's see, and this one is this? And, and the heat, so the heat and the electricity are really the, the drivers there. This doesn't, the utilities, that, there's the electric bill in there and we are doing the Plymouth River windows this year, so. But I have no way of testing that. So you know, we might be a little lucky and probably show a little better showing than the 62,000. And that could impact heat too, because some of this heat component is Plymouth River uh, electric as well. So we've got, you know, I think that we could end up doing a little bit better uh, with, with the window project that uh, will be underway and completed by the summer. But this is the best guess right now. So 3.38%, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. You can look at the details later, but I, I just wanted to highlight certain areas here. Yeah, let me just talk about this one here, the uh, non-ice equipment rental. So this $61, you know, 50, 61,058, that's Libby Industrial Parkway. That's the traces program. That's the building that we lease for traces because there's no space in town for that program. All right, so that's $61,000 right there. And, and we're presuming that we're going to continue doing that so we can keep uh, keep uh, those, that, that, those trades programs for those key kids that we have uh, going. And then allowance for increases, those, well, most of our CBAs, all of our CBAs are set for 2023, but there's uh, individual contracts and other um, items that need to be covered. This is a blow up of special ed and you see the driver right here is in districts, out of district tuitions. And that's really because we've had five age outs. And from special ed perspective, uh, student center special ed, typically when they graduated 18, they'd be done. If they're not done at 18 and they extend at 22, they're done. So if they're aging out, these are all 22-year-olds that have reached uh, the age that are no longer the responsibility of the town. Um, and vocational technics, there's not a lot of happening here, but we do separate it out so that everybody can kind of see the piece parts. So you see a big decrease, 4.18% in special ed, but look up here, there's teaching. Okay, so the teachers, of course, will increase because they have steps and lanes and um, uh, yeah, steps and lanes, because we didn't have any special ed teachers this year, I don't believe uh, in, into this budget, into the special ed account. So that's just the increase in uh, steps and lanes for that year. Last year, we added a lot of positions. And so here's what we did add. We had 3405, we've got two contracted counselors in, so we really have permanent new positions that are budgeted 32.05. Now, is there 32.05 in there right now? No, because we have people, you know, we still have a little bit of churn going on. Sometimes uh, someone come in and all of a sudden they leave, because this is a Paris and tutors, it's a, it's a mix of everything. Sometimes the teachers come in, they have to go on a leave of absence and, you know, it takes a little, a little lull between the hiring of a couple of weeks to try to get a long-term sub in there. So there's a lot of fluctuation when you're, when you're working with uh, some 700 people and uh, you know, 60, 62 million dollars. We do have the two contracted counselors in, early on in the uh, school year, the, you know, seeing the, the um, social, emotional needs of the kids in the schools, we quickly realized that we needed to get those contracted positions in, so they're functional. So the point in this one is all of these positions are still included in this 1.43% budget. Okay, so everything that we did last year is in the 1.43% budget. This is uh, back in, I don't know, it was October, November, early on, when we met with the School Committee. We talked about the needs that we would have for the district and understanding, you know, the year that we were about to have, knowing how much money we got last year. Um, the School Committee, we talked and said, well, let's take a look at what we need and let's see if we can put a priority schedule out there and sort of schedule these along to, to get to a point where the school system would be, as we've been referring to it, right-sized over time. So we looked at a, a number of these, and I'm not saying this is all inclusive. I think it's got a lot of the things we need, but the strategic plan will enlighten us some more. So I can't say it's totally accurate. I can't say it's not accurate. And I can't say it won't add. I can't say we won't deduct, but this is from all the experience that we've had over the years in our discussions. These are positions that we felt that we need. And then we prioritize them into um, 2023, 2024, 2025 and 2026. So the critical ones, Central Office of Media and Communications, we had that in the budget last year. We did hire that. I just highlight this because we hired it at a, at a higher level than what we had initially budgeted for, because we need uh, we need more experienced experience. That's what we need. We, we, you know, these have to be, these have to be um, you know, positions where, you know, we're getting um, good value for uh, the, the value for the needs we have or we're really uh, you know, getting the, the job we need done, done by a person that has the capability of doing it. We, we need data analysis lead. Uh, that's somebody to look at the data that's um, in this organization. We have plenty of it. Trouble is, everybody's so uh, overtaxed that lots of times we don't have time to dig up all the data and then put it into meaningful reports so that the leaders of this organization, the superintendent, the School Committee, so it can take that and see what the picture is so that they can make effective uh, effective uh, moves and um, governance. HR clerical support, we did get HR Director. Um, the, the HR Director's doing um, way too much clerical work. This person needs a- This person needs another support person to, you know, do a lot of the nitty gritty. Now that she's been there a year and a half, she can identify what her organization needs. And she can start dishing off some of the easier stuff so that we can. Go about the business of creating a a good, strong human resource function within the school department that is uh constantly looking at our employees and looking out how we can make them happy, effective and productive. Very important. Um, and then the payroll benefits, man, that in in a sense, that's got a connection to HR too, because some of the benefits, if you take the benefits off her, she can focus more on those areas too. Because we get a lot of questions, a lot of a lot of things in payroll, we have one person that that's doing payroll. And with the complication of six CBAs, multiple individual contracts, stipends up the, you know, galore. Um, COVID specials and and all the stuff that's going on, it just is impossible for one panel person to handle effectively. Um, I think Nancy does a great job getting the payroll out, doing it, you know, other mistakes, yeah, do we get them corrected? Absolutely. But whenever we make a mistake, it upsets everybody. So um, we don't like to make mistakes. And I think what we need there is some oversight into that position um to sort of bring that payroll function in the school department to a new level. Um, PD tools and tools teach, and so we need an assessment uh product for uh to continue uh evolving our math programs and other programs. And then, once we get these assessment tools, we need to be able to train them. We've been um, the schools are really in dire need of a of a the uh finance director. So that's in this year's uh budget. A late bus for the high school so that more people can take uh. Can participate in extracurricular activities because it has been a barrier to some. That's a low cost. And considering that we run our own fleet, you know, Patrick Cunningham is great at uh transportation and we're able to do that. Uh, subs, we've had to increase the rate to get subs because the the cost of the. You know, the workforce that's that's out there now. Uh, I presume that we'll still have some issues next year, so we've increased the rate. So this is really reflecting the rate increase. And then the um two sped V and special education V and. This year, because contractors had not been able to. Find workforce in order to operate their fleets, we've had to pick up more and more routes and we've done that with equipment that's um surplus. But you know, we put it into good stead so that we can take it out and start using it. So this proposal in here to 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 take least two vans really replaces some older vans that we have. That are operational that aren't gonna survive long term uh through a five year lease. And we'd we'd actually make the drivers, which we call subs right now, would make them permanent drivers. And the thing about this, if if we, you know, we have what seventy five thousand dollars in here. If we remove this seventy five, our costs actually go up because this is more efficient than us contracting out those routes that we have to do. For each one of these, I probably save nine thousand dollars even after the cost of the V and. And you know, that's fully loaded, assuming that they take insurance too, when we do that type of analysis. So um, it's it's really economical to uh to to take this role. And rather, we while we did put these vans into the capital budget as well, we're presuming that, you know, we're we're not gonna get our capital budget, so. What we have them in the operating budget, let's lease them. Um, we pay a little bit more, but we do save money. And then they this is a five year lease, after five years, we own them. And then they're still uh serviceable. We we do a good job maintaining our vehicles. And um, you know, we'll still get more value out of them and be able to put them to productive use. This position here at Student Service Administration Assistant, this has actually been hired this year because of dire need. So we've actually put this in place and and this is the budget money to service that. Just quickly, before I move on to the other, let's talk about, so we've often um talked about the technology budget. We have four hundred and we have hun, you know, uh. You have a four hundred thousand dollars in the technology budget. And this is the replacement for like the uh laptops and whatnot, which we added so many more during COVID, those are gonna be expired. So at some point, that capital allotment for just our computer replacements and technology doesn't belong there and we believe it needs to be moved to the operating budget. So that's a a projection that we said in twenty twenty four, let's move that out of capital, put that into the operating budget. So the capital allocation that we can get, you know, sometimes we get a million dollars, sometimes we get a million three, a million four, sometimes we get seven hundred. We've got twelve buildings or really ten billion, ten buildings to maintain. The the cost of maintaining those is getting expensive, they're getting older, um, and some of them need a lot of work. Uh, you know, so that the million dollars, well, it sounds like a big number when you when you manage in that much real estate. It really is dwarfed. So we'd like to get the one point three million without. The capital allotment. And uh then then other requests that were made, we sort of pushed them out. We've had a few special ed requests in here. Um, there's been talk about a direct of equity and inclusion, but um we're spending this time developing a sense of belonging before we bring in such a position. So we've sort of pushed that out a bit. The high school has been asking for another assistant principal. Um, we'd like to have the strategic plan done and the uh and the and the personnel audit before we turn around and and place that. So we pushed that out a bit. Social studies would uh has requested more FTEs. Once again, the strategic plan and the equity and the teacher audit, so. We assessing what we need really for all these FTEs. This uh special education five oh four team cheer, those were up. That's um, so there's a special education. Presentation that's on the website and the budget as well that Suzanne Venice gave back in um, uh, I think on the twentieth. And she shows that there has been a spike in five oh four cases and this is a need for team cheers um at the high school and I believe at the middle school. So anyways, what we've done instead of loading twenty three with everything, we pushed these out into what we think is a responsible progression. Which would get school um department closer to where it has to get to. As not complete because we need to get the strategic plan incorporated in there as well. Um, going on, there's a this school adjustment counselor is really, they're not, they're guidance adjustment counselors, they're sort of uh. They're adjustment counselors uh for each of the elementary schools to to service the needs of kids. You know, Jamie, Jamie has a real good definition of the guidance counselor. It's like, I look at it as like. You know, these are little kids and they're taking care of their needs, whether they be academic or whether they be social emotional. So. You know, I I just left them there as a school adjustment counselors, but there is, there's a need for one in each school because they're overloaded right now. Um, and then there were some requests for coaching and, you know, we've kept those out of the budget right now, although even though the school committee voted this budget last night, they have requested that, you know. We try to add unified um sports coaches position into this budget, you know, four twenty three, I think that was a. A request there. So the net effect of ads in this budget is eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. The uh. So I'm going here. The offsets, sorry about that. I think we should, I think we should talk about this one first. So typically, we the we always do a net budget. Um, and so we gross it up and then we remove offsets from the budget. So we charge off grants. You know, IDA function here is eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, for the preliminary budget, we have nine hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars from that grant. The uh early education, um, the grant not much, but the circuit breaker, that's another big one. So circuit breaker is, that's an offset for those tuition. So you saw how special ed um tuitions went down to one point three, uh down one point three million. Circuit breaker has also gone up. So you you know, you get a hundred thousand dollar benefit there. And then we have a pre cape uh tuition revolving account of two twenty. So total offsets for that three point one million dollars from um. In in the special ed spending category and you got one point four seven in the regular ed. That's athletics. Uh, if we look at athletics. It's zero, it's zero funded this year, not zero funded, zero growth. So whatever growth was there, we've added um revolving account to cover that. Middle school activity fee and the big driver on this one has to do with the um uh full day kindergarten, seven hundred sixty nine thousand dollars. So you know, you look at total offsets of uh forty um four million five hundred seventy thousand dollars. So the total school spending is really sixty seven oh seven one, right? So you know, we're asking for sixty two. So it just is, just so the public sees that the spending is actually greater than what the operating budget is because we are using all of this grant money. And as I said before, we don't always go to a hundred percent of the grants. So there's some money left for supplies here. If if we had to do some additional training, we could do some training. Sometimes we don't spend the grant, so we have some rollover money that we can use for those functions as well. So even beyond the sixty seven, there's other additional spending that would go that doesn't. Fit into the operating budget. It doesn't reflect itself in the operating budget. This next one is just trying to show uh, you know, the uh the growth with the net tuitions with the offset. So. You know, here's gross tuitions as we're projecting off here. Um, is that, you know, one, three, six, six, nine, eight. And then, you know, after uh the um, the circuit breaker is reducing that amount. To uh the one, three, four, two, eight, five, oh. And if you look at the circuit breaker, this is showing you the circuit breaker, it's a negative, so this is offset. Might be a little difficult. What what we did start doing in this couple of past couple of years too is instead of, this is the IDA grant here. Instead of using um IDA grant to fund people where we have to pay a nine percent MTRS, we've started using the IDA grant to fund tuitions. And then we we save nine percent. So on a million dollars, we could save ninety thousand dollars and 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 do something else more productive with it. So this is the net tuitions and then you subtract out this one point eight, you subtract out the four forty five and that's how you get the net tuition of one, three, um, four, two. So one thing, it might be a little difficult to look, it doesn't come right out and hit you, but I wanted to put the detail into the presentation. So if you want to study it later, you can. Um, so what are the major drivers in this budget? The the special education tuition age outs, there's no question about it, that is the major driver. Um, increased circuit breakers is another ninety thousand, hundred thousand dollars in twenty two and we did the hiring, it's favorable hiring, we did good. We we, you know, budget at a at a master five level, we came in at that or below that to the the um, the budgeting um for twenty two and the added positions were were very effective. Um, retirement to resignation. So this budget includes uh, you know, excluding mine, eight eight retirements, teacher retirements. And you know, we don't know if there'll be more coming or so, but each retirement will um. Show, you know, uh, the differential between most likely top of the step and uh, you know, in a master five. So you know, it's thirty to forty thousand dollars. I mentioned the zero growth athletics budget. So whatever it was last year, um, I kept it the same by uh increasing the revolving account to offset. And we did talk about the increase in electricity costs. So general price increasing, when you look at the custodial or you look at the maintenance uh account, that's where. Um, well, general price increases for four point seven, that would be your supply allocation. So you know, if to the extent. We'll see charts later where we have supplies, it's like here's the, you know, million dollars worth of discretionary supplies, if you call them discretionary, even though you need those. Local uh, the the government's PDI or price deflator index for um local and state governments. This is a a published figure by the by the US government, the Bureau of uh Economic Development, I believe. Uh, it it's four point seven percent, that's third quarter of a third quarter. And then prior to getting my budget all set, I heard that the fourth quarter was running at six point five percent and our experience is running at six point five percent for the trades contracts. Meaning um plumbing, electrical, um HVAC, uh, you know. Needless to say, with the labor shortages, we're just paying, you know, what has to be paid in order to uh to maintain the plant. So in the in the budget coming up, those are increased, trades are increased at six point five percent, um, supplies are increased at four point seven percent. But they're not impacted by enrollments. Typically, I'd increase by um whatever the general price increase is, plus any percentage increase in enrollment. But you know, we're sitting in enrollment at the same as last year. So uh, it's it's just the the inflation factor that's playing in here. So that's really, those are the major drivers of this budget. When you look at the overall pie, you know, here you have personnel costs at eighty seven percent. Here's tuition, so you know, one point five eight, that includes um low tech contracted services, uh, that's gonna be your HVAC and and other contracted services that incorporate in this budget. Heating, electric utilities, one point five, textbooks, uh, five hundred and uh five oh seven. And other, you know, one point four three seven. So the rest is gonna be easy, folks, because it's mostly pitches. I'm just giving you graphs here. So. If you if you tie the numbers, the numbers are there, but you can just see pies. Okay, so you know, here's regular, I break them up different ways to, you know, give different slices of uh. However, you wanna look at it. And of course, if you like numbers, you can always go into the detailed budget and you can see, you know, what the individual components are. Uh, okay, so this one here is special education breakdown. Here's teaching services, counseling, transportation, tuitions. So you know, that's how special ed breaks down. Another another cut of things, here's regular ed, here's special ed. Here's our facilities operations, regular transportation, school committee and administration. You know, it's important to say that, you know, we we never, special ed doesn't get any piece of this. Right? You know, but but really, you know, some of those functions are they're supporting special and vote tech too. This is just the the regular education aspects of these, so. I don't want people to think we don't, you know, facilities and operation shows in regular ed, but we're really supporting the whole school system when we do this stuff. Nice bar graph, mix it up a little bit. Um, facilities breakdown, electricity, heat, utilities, maintenance, custodial services. So, alright, so what are the risks? Those four vote tech pending applications and any more that I get. The soaring energy prices, although this budget, we've got gas at three ten and we've got diesel at three twenty. And we got the natural gas term at one thirty and this is a contracted price, so we should be good for the gas term, the natural gas term. And these here, sort of like waiting for these to, this is if I did contracts right now, this is where we'd be at, but. I I don't think it's gonna stay up there forever. And electric is running at fifteen point six cents per kilowatt. Yahoo to hang a municipal light because. For the years that I've been here, these rates have not. They sort of went up a little bit and then they sort of came back down to normal and, you know, they've been running in this range for many, many years and uh. You know, I see it in Hangum, but if you if you ever looked at an electric bill from some other place, you might be looking at twenty, twenty five cents per kilowatt. So. You know, I think that uh HMLP is doing a great job for us. Of course, we could have new special ed placements, right? They could come in anytime. But we do have the special ed reserve for that. Okay, so uh, you know, we could, if we got stuck with a, you know, a placement today, a three hundred thousand dollar placement, that'd be the perfect place to be used in a special ed reserve. I think there's um some five hundred thousand in there and we may move some more in this year. And none of this presumes any significant ramp up in COVID expenses without reimbursement. So, you know, I'm hopeful that it's over, but I was hopeful it was over last year. Um, this year's budget, the twenty two budget, we have made some expenditures that are COVID related, but it has not been anywhere nearly uh. The amount that we did last year and I think, you know, it's financial. So let's see what we got here. What's this one? Okay, so then I did, I just threw on the sheet to the warrant items. I know we'll talk about those later, but if I could just tee them up here for a second. Uh, it's a majority vote approval to enter into a five year lease for the special education um vans. The mass procurement law is the last three year leases, so if I wanted to release for more than three years, five years, I need to get a majority vote approval for the town. So there's a warrant item in there for that. Keep in mind, when we do these municipal leases, the the benefit of that is even though we may pay a little bit more because we pay interest, at the end of five years, we own those that equipment. And Patrick Cunningham is a master of putting this equipment to work. So we can get a lot of value out of um, of, you know, as we have over the past five, six years of um. In a sense, owning and operating our own fleet. Even though we do it with leases and or at least to. Even though we do it with leases and or at least own. Tennis court reconstruction, this is a joint article with the recreation department for eight hundred sixty four thousand dollars. That's to replace the, I don't know, spelling error here. I'll fix that. That's to replace the six tennis courts at the high school, which are not in a repairable state any longer into. So it totally demolished them and put a post in concrete, six post in concrete, post tensioned concrete tennis courts in place. A little bit more expensive than asphalt, but from what I understand of longer duration and of better quality, you know, which would be a good investment for the taxpayer, I believe.
Excuse me, John, we are going to cover these in a separate section on our agenda for the warrant articles.
Okay, so then, lastly, then I'll just, this is Plymouth River Windows, just to correct the funding source for that. So we need a new vote. So there it is. Questions? How's that?
That, John, that was that was superb. I really didn't appreciate how much you enjoy the pie charts. So we're going to have to do something as you leave that is pie related. You'll remember us and we will remember you. I am going to start with the school committee since you you are really reporting to them. So I'm going to ask Carrie Nie to take over in terms of any questions or comments.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to give a little context. Dr. Maestus and John Ferris did a great job describing how they came up with the the budget. But I wanted to kind of explain the direction we gave to them as we developed it for people who weren't in the weeds the way we were. So as you know, we have finite resources and those fund what we value most. And that's true for the school committee and it's also true for the town. I think Hangum's a town that takes pride in our schools and rightfully so. Many of our students do very well, and it's not uncommon for them to go out into the world and then come back to raise their own children here. However, when COVID hit in twenty twenty, some of our deficiencies as a school department were exposed and they impacted our ability to respond to the pandemic. As you know, last year, we all worked together with the select board and advisory committee to address some of the deficiencies and to start to remediate student learning loss. And we really appreciate and continue to appreciate your partnership. At the time, we were clear that we were not asking for everything the school department needs. And I think John made that clear tonight. We were just asking for positions that were crucial to our students' recovery, because that's the thing we all valued most. We were also clear that this was not a one and done. Students will likely need years to recover from the impact of COVID. And while we knew that to be true, I don't think any of us had any idea the extent of the impact COVID would have and is having on students. The good news is that at our meeting last night, Dr. LeBola presented the current data on student learning, and the picture is hopeful. While it's clear that students have not recovered academically from the pandemic, it is clear that they're recovering. So again, we thank you for your partnership and adding the positions last year that helped make that possible. We just wanted to make the point that this global pandemic isn't over. While the students are in the building this school year, things are far from normal. And the current circumstances have exposed different areas of challenge, which continue to impact our ability to respond to the pandemic in the way we really should. We had hoped that the strategic plan would drive this year's budget request, but the timeline was disrupted when Dr. Austin resigned. As you know, that process is now underway, along with the staffing study that Dr. Maestus referred to. So we should have a lot more data for future use. But that left us with the question of how to approach this year's budget. The direction we gave Dr. Maestus and Mr. Ferris was to budget for what we have in place right now, along with any glaring structural deficiencies, which they've done and somehow was only a one point four budget increase. Because we we believe, we really believe that we have to correct those deficiencies. So we set our next superintendent up for success. So as we all work through the budget process this year, and we really do appreciate everyone's partnership and of the many smart volunteers who are working with us to get it right. I just feel like this year, we're at a decision point as a school committee and as a town about what we want to be and what we want our schools to be. And I know I speak with the committee when I say that what we value is a school system that can educate all of our students. We value a system in which families want to keep their kids in public schools rather than send them to private schools. And we value a school system that supports students with disabilities, so that their families want to keep them in district and in a district that has the necessary resources to educate them. So we did vote unanimously to support this budget last night at our meeting. I don't know if anyone else on the school committee has anything you want to say. If you could just use the other raise hand function, because I can't see everyone. I'm not seeing anyone. Sorry, Michelle. All right, so I see Ness and then Michelle.
All right, thank you so much, Carrie. Sorry about that. My first time with Zoom. I was just wanting to reiterate Carrie's comments and to thank John and Dr. Maestus and all of the directors and principals and the leadership team that put their time and energy into putting this budget forth. I do think this is a very, very responsible budget that takes into account the finite resources that we have as a town, but also does what it can to meet the needs of our students. And I think our vote last night in unanimous support of it speaks a lot. And I appreciate the support and the willingness of all the folks on this town, on this call, from the community members on to AdCom to the Board of Select to listen to the budget proposal and to consider what we are asking for. So thank you for your work and your commitment to our schools.
Great, thank you. And I think Ness has her hand up. There we go.
I think I'm unmuted now. Thanks so much for pulling together this presentation, working with John quite a bit over these past several months. And I I just truly appreciate how his brain works and I'm going to miss that. I, you know, the the work that we did in the Sustainable Budget Task Force, I'm really appreciative of. I think we have come together collectively, and I think it's really important that we continue to do that and continue to have these open discussions and conversations. I did want to mention that I am part of the Equity and Inclusion Task Force. And we had been talking about a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Director last year. That has not gone away. People might have seen John's presentation in the in the budget for twenty twenty five. That is something that is being thought about very thoughtfully. We're working with a coach here in the district, Dr. Darnisa Amonte Jackson. And the the timing, she feels as if the timing is not right. And collectively, we feel like we need to do some more work on the belonging in our district. So I wanted to make sure I highlighted that, that that is not something that is insignificant. We are thoughtful about when and how to do that, because we we want to do this work. It's really important. It's really important that we do it right and we do it well. And we can't go too fast with it, which is what we we have heard from our amazing coach. So I just wanted to highlight that and thank you again for pulling this together, John.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands from the school committee.
Well, Carrie, thank you. I'm going to now turn to my fellow select board members. But I I first want to direct a question. I'm not sure whether it's to you or to someone else on the school committee, but we've heard a lot of talk about the strategic plan. Could you just comment on the timetable for that and what the opportunities are for parental input in that plan?
Yeah, definitely. I don't know if Dr. Maestus is still on. We're we've started right now. There we go.
Everybody, when to get a, when to get a water? Yeah, so the strategic plan is underway. We have six focus groups that we're running. We we ran a parent focus group, a school committee focus group. But I think the biggest opportunity or the greatest opportunity for families to contribute or stakeholders to contribute is a survey that we'll be sending out right after vacation. So probably around the first of March, we'll be seeing a survey that's going to go out to the community. And it takes about fifteen minutes to to complete it. And I think it would be great for every sector of the community to have an opportunity to fill it out. If you are an alumnus of the school district, if you are a current student, if you're a parent, you have multiple kids, one kid, we want to get your feedback. Students, middle school and above, as well as, you know, grandparents. If we if we, if you have a stake in the Hangum Public Schools, we want to hear from you. So that that will be going out probably the first week in March. We were going to have it released this week, but we thought it would be better to have it go out right after vacation. So that's that's probably the best way to get some input, Joe.
Will that survey be available online?
Yes, it is online.
Great.
And one thing that I will say is if, you know, you all hear different stakeholder groups in the community that does not have access to technology and they need a hard copy of a survey, we can accommodate that as well. So if that is a need, we will definitely look at at providing that. Because I know sometimes it's difficult to get technology in certain areas of of the stakeholder groups, we will definitely do that.
Thank you. I'll now turn this over to Liz Klein.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you, John, for the presentation. Thank you, Carrie. It's a lot of information, appreciate it. I was able to see Dr. Jamie's presentation last night, which was excellent as as usual. And and certainly glad to see the the trends in the in the performance metrics. Just a question about that. Is that what you were expecting based on the the FTEs that were added last year? Is that where you thought we'd be? And are you happy with that progress?
Yes, we are. We actually didn't expect to see the growth over last year's cohort actually as strong or as significantly different. We we knew that we had made progress. I think through the analysis and reflection, I was actually a little surprised at how well we were doing relative to the other issues relative to masking and spacing, the other things that sort of that made the school challenging. So it looks quite promising and we're excited to see as the model becomes fully implemented, what we can actually do. We're excited.
Great, great. And I know we were expecting to see the number of students on IEPs or five oh fours increase this year, and it looks like that has come to fruition. Do you see that number coming back down? Or are you, we adding more special educators there?
We're not adding special, more special education teachers this coming year, because we added four last year with two other directors. So we're going to reestablish what we've got going on, take stock of it and see how we're doing following that. Where we're seeing the biggest increase in need is in our evaluation system. So we may not be finding all of those children eligible for special education, but certainly families are worried about how their children have fared over the pandemic. So we're getting a lot of requests for evaluations, which is why we need the extra support with counselors and psychologists and potentially down the road to team chair because of the volume.
Okay.
But in terms of the spike, so what's concerning right now is that that the number that John shared is only the first four months of school. And so we don't know how we're going to increase across the the rest of this school year or if it's going to stabilize. And so we're going to have to watch it for the rest of this year to see if we can come up with some sort of prediction. If it's a COVID, if it's just a result of COVID and just this past year or two, or if it's going to be a new trend.
Okay, great. So the counselors added at the elementary schools, they, will they be helping to do those assessments for evaluations?
No, so to clarify, the counselors that were listed on on the budget sheet for FY twenty three are actually guidance counselors, which will be utilized for general education support, especially in the social emotional realm of supports for students. What I was referencing were the contracted services that John had presented on another slide to help offset the volume of evaluations that our psychologists, speech and language pathologists specifically are doing.
Got it. So those two contracted positions are staying in, correct?
Yes, generally speaking, the budget line for special education allows for contracted services so that we can respond to challenges such as that. So we're going to continue following that course to make sure that it's not a long-term trend. But, you know, John, make sure that we have enough in our budget line to contract for any of those services that we require.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's it for me for right now.
Thank you, Bill Ramsey.
Thank you. Yeah, first of all, John Ferris, great job with your last budget presentation. I have known you for a long time, John, and I've really, really grown to appreciate all the great work you've done the last two years working with you. So I thank you for that. And to Dr. Maestus, Dr. LeBola, Carrie, I and the entire committee, thank you for your commitment to our schools. And thank you for your partnership with our budget. Really very much appreciate working with you. Just really one question. And and John, you might be the best person to answer this. You you mentioned one of the big drivers was the the special education student age outs. I think you mentioned there were four or five, and you mentioned that as a big part of driving your budget. What what is the cost impact of the age outs?
So the 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 age outs, sometimes i- in a residential placement, you can be, you know, upwards of, you know, two fifty to three hundred thousand dollars per student.
Oh, per student?
Yeah.
Okay. And actually, I ask you one more, if you don't mind. Yeah, I I hear a lot about, you know, the the impact of out of district enrollment. And did I hear right? So we we've dropped from fifty three to forty two?
Yes.
So a so a drop of eleven, okay. All right, great. Thanks very much. Appreciate your work on the budget, John.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. I will now turn this to Julie Straley and the advisory committee.
Thanks, Joe. And I'll echo my thanks to John for his work on putting together the budget and must feel good last budget. And the advisory committee, Aces Subcommittee has already been working with the school committee and about questions about the budget so far. But it's nice for us all to see the full budget request tonight. And I will ask if any advisory committee members at this time have any questions. You can raise your hand. George.
Thank you, thank you, Julie. And thank you, thank you, John, for a great presentation. John, just for a point of clarification, the budget increases roughly one point four three percent, but but that's being driven primarily by that big reduction in out of district placements. So just to to sort of set the table, what is the actual rate of increase in expenses if we discounted that that reduction in tuitions? I suspect it's much more than one point four three percent.
Yeah, George, so if we, if you look at the, you know, when we break down the individual budget, we look at the so, you know, regular ed is up three point three eight percent. You know, if we, because we show the, we show the individual totals. And when you, let's see, I'm just looking at, it's it's on the charts. So that's what I I would say, you know, and 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 I think, you know, I think the question somewhat fair. And then the other thing, it's somewhat not fair too, because, you know, a budget is a budget. You put all the pieces together, you know, and and that's how it works and it always has worked. So, you know, you can't, so yeah, tuitions, when you look at that, if you look at sped supervision, the change is, you know, up. But you got to look at it in its total. So I'd have to, you know, special ed is down four point one eight percent. But I didn't look at taking that out, but if you look at, and and VOTEC's down seventeen point one percent.
And and John, if you if you don't have the number now, I'm not asking to try to create it on the fly.
No, I didn't look at it. I mean, but if you look at regular ed, it's up three point three eight percent. Regular ed, and that's a big part of the budget, right?
Right, 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 right.
You know, so if you look at, and and when you look at a budget, there's only really three big things in a budget. There's personnel and there's energy and then special education. You know, tuitions, that was, those are the three things that can drive a school budget. There's not much else that can drive it. And that's because there's eighty seven percent is is personnel. But regular ed at three point three eight. So if if you normalize a regular special ed, you'd probably think it would be somewhere in that vicinity.
Okay.
That's my, that would be my hunt right there, you know. It would be in that vicinity. If regular ed's there, special ed's going to be in the same place, except for you've got to deal with the nuances of special ed and what you have for, you know, actual students, and how you're dealing with transportation, and how you're dealing with tuitions.
All right. Thank you, John.
Yes.
Bob's working on his iPad's mute button. I can just see it. Not yet, Bob.
The clock is ticking.
Is that on a phone? You're not on a phone or a computer?
I think it's his iPad. All right. Andy, you go ahead, and Bob's going to work on it. He does this all the time. He gets in the nick of time. Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Okay, sorry. You know, I keep hitting my unmute, you know, icon, and it doesn't do anything. And I've got to do something else, which I finally figure out. But in any event, this is kind of a same sort of question I asked last week. And it relates to the inflation risk, or, you know, the, one of the budget risks that you had on one of your slides, John, for which I thank you for the presentation. But I assume that, you know, with all of the contracts, that there are cost of living adjustment COLA provisions. And I'd be interested in knowing how those would be triggered by a rise in inflation, and whether you're seeing that as a, one of the budget risks. Thank you.
Yeah. So, Bob, I don't see it as a budget risk in the '23 budget. And that's, you know, basically, I don't see it because the contracts, they're already set, and they don't have, like, inflation riders in them, or, you know, or any language to that effect. So for '23, the rates are the rates, and when I schedule people, I go from zero people. Basically, you know what your base is, so I don't go from zero people. But I take each person, and I individually price them out. So, you know, we're scheduling all the people based on the contract rates and the step they would be at for the next budget year. You know, and if you think about that longer term, I remember you asking that question last week in the Sustainable Budget Meeting. The, that 3.5%, I mean, it's my, and, you know, forecasting is, you know, is very humbling, right? But when we said 3.5%, it's my, I thought that that's going to cover, that's covering inflation. Because I don't think that way, I don't think this inflation is going to be a long-term inflation. I do think that it's going to rectify itself. And, you know, I think that there's, the workforce is getting older, so I think there's going to be more retirements in the future. Like, I had eight this year. When I first came in here, I mean, the first couple of years I came in here, I believe, I think one year we had 16 retirements. That's a big change in a workforce, right? So if we're, and we have a lot of people up at the top, and I've been here 11 years, and they've been here 11 years, and, you know, God knows how many years before me. So, you know, America's graying a little bit, so you could end up with a turnover as well. So, and I think that's coming, you know, based on what I know for the personnel here. So, and that helps, right?
Either COLA or inflation provisions in the collective bargaining agreements? And will they, if they don't kick in in FY23, is it an issue for FY24 or '25?
I believe that in negotiations, it could be an issue, sure. But there are no COLAs, there's no COLAs reflected in our contracts. They're all rates established, you know, typically across the board at 2-2-2 was the last one for the vast majority of these contracts, and that's it.
Good to know. Thank you.
Sorry, Joe. I think Liza might have some information on this.
Yeah. Bob, as far as the contracts go, we negotiated a three-year contract for 2020 to 2023. So our COLA agreements are set. However, we will have new negotiations in '23. And per the Sustainable Budget Task Force recommendation, and as the school committee has always done for all of our contracts, we would want to have a meeting with the Select Board and the Advisory Committee and the Personnel Board in executive session prior to going into that, those negotiations. You know, we didn't do that when the town went into its negotiations this year. So, you know, we didn't have that conversation together. But I would suggest the school committee do that prior to, you know, going into our next negotiations. And I believe it's something that should be done sooner rather than later, especially for planning for any potential overrides going forward, because everyone should understand all the ramifications of those contracts. So you're correct to bring it up, but the school contracts are set for this fiscal, the fiscal '23 year.
Thank you, Liza, and we will make sure that that gets scheduled properly.
Thanks, Liza. Andy?
John, when you observed about the grain of America, I just wanted to note that neither Dr. Gallon nor I took any offense to your comment.
At least she got it, Andy. At least she got it. That's all I could say. And I'm gray on the sides anyway, so.
I wanted to add my thanks to the others, and congratulations on a great presentation. I'm not sure I saw a school committee vote that grants you the authority to resign, but I'll leave that with them. My question was, the budget is 87% to personnel costs. Is there a standard in Massachusetts? Either a recommended standard that suggests, where the state suggests school departments ought to be spending X percentage of their budgets on personnel? Or is there an average or median figure?
That's a good question. I don't really know if there's a standard. Yeah, I don't know, Andy. I mean, I could look into it, but I don't know. You know, 87% is a lot, but we did hire a lot of new people last year, and we tend to restrain our other expenses. And I think we do a good job managing those types of expenses. You know, perhaps others might use more contract work. Contractors aren't considered in our personnel costs. So I'd have to look into it. It's a good question.
Thanks.
Any other advisory committee members have questions or comments?
Julie, if I can just respond to the last question. So the, there was a survey, it's the American Association of School Administrators survey, and they show between 80 and 85% of budgets are on personnel. That's the national average.
Thanks, Joe. That was, who was that? What organization was that? American Association of?
It's the American Association of School Administrators.
So I'm fielding AdCom questions. I know, Tim, if you have, like, a clarification. But if we could, do you have a clarification or something?
I do. I just wanted to say there's a sort of philosophical point sort of at the heart of the last question. I think part of our understanding is that the biggest bang for your buck in terms of student outcomes is through personnel. So I think we should be pretty comfortable. In my opinion, we should be pretty comfortable.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. Nancy?
Thanks, Julie, and thanks to everyone and all the hard work that's gone in over the last year by all boards present. I, my question is about technology, and what you're seeing in terms of trends on technology spends. Obviously, there's been a fair amount of increase because of COVID. But I'm also thinking outside of COVID as technology just becomes more pervasive and how that's being handled in the budget.
Yeah, thanks, Nancy. So that is, if, in the regular education budget, you look at the technology, and that's reflecting the licenses for those computers. And then Joe Andrews has put together a, you know, I asked him that question earlier. It says, how are we going to do the replacement with COVID? I mean, literally, I think parasol have a laptop, everybody has a computer. So you have all those licenses agreements. And then, you know, we got into a lot of online-type training and applications and the like. And I believe many of those are being renewed as well as they're using the tools. So I think that what we have for technology, you know, when you look at the budget from an operating standpoint, at least the software and the licenses, we're probably stable with the licenses for the equipment, so you can expect regular growth in those. I don't know of any new app blockbuster. But then, when you look at the overall technology like this year, one of the infrastructure things is some of the smart boards have to be changed out. The smart boards are very, very old. So Joe's put together a plan of saying, hey, here's your replacement PCs, right? So we replace laptops and desktops. You know, are we going to migrate to all laptops and docking stations in the future? Either way, the device is going to be the device, and I think we're sort of pricing those out so we have some idea of what the future technology spend is going to look like. And right now, all of that's sitting in the capital budget. So, and that is the impetus to, like, say, this isn't capital any longer. What this is, this is regular operating stuff. And that's why the proposal for 2024 is to take that $476,000 level and move that into the operating budget. And then, of course, that will have to grow over time as well. And that will give us the ability to make the computer replacements and desktop replacements through the operating budget as opposed to taking our capital. Because with the buildings, we need to maintain our buildings. And if we're allotted 1.3% or, and it's not allotment, it's always a one-for-one. So we have an endless supply of projects that we could do. But if we, at the end of the day, because we have to share, we only get like 1.3, $500,000 of that is technology. We only get $800,000, and that's not enough to take care of, you know, buildings that cost you $60,000, $70,000, $80,000, $90,000 million and getting older. Does that, did that answer, you know, so I think we've, it's sitting in capital right now, and it's going to hopefully be moved into, it's hopefully going to be moved into the operating budget as the school budget gets right-sized.
Yes. I mean, in deference to Tim, I am in agreement that obviously people make the most impact, but technology is a very close second, and it's something we need to be mindful of and watch as a whole community here.
Yeah.
Anyone else from advisory committee have any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Joe?
Julie, thank you. I will now ask members of the public if they have questions on the fiscal year '23 school budget. I see Priya Howell. If you could just give your name and address for the record.
Thanks. Priya Howell, 26th El Prep Drive. I just had a question. If there were items that came out of the strategic plan, like one that's my personal pet peeve is how early the middle school starts and how grumpy and tired that makes my middle schooler, would it be possible with the way the budget is to make any changes in time for the next school year? Or would we have to wait until the following school year?
I can answer that question. A schedule in a school, it doesn't necessarily take monetary resources to actually make the schedule change. It'll take a number of adjustments within the school day to make that happen. I think the strategic plan will highlight the need for, or the desire for, a scheduling change. But I don't know that preliminarily, without going through the scheduling development process, the strategic planning process is one avenue that we'll have to go through, but also the schedule development process is another, to actually define out what schedule will actually work within a school environment. So I would say that, you know, monetarily, it may not be necessary to add more dollars to the budget to actually make a schedule change work. So that will have to, that work will have to happen at the school level. There is a team at the middle school now looking at a potential schedule change. But that's the schedule change as far as how kids move from class to class. The, what you're talking about is the start time of day. And I don't know that even that would cause a monetary impact to the budget. It would be, potentially, buses would have to travel at different times to be able to pick kids up on the start and the end of day. But that would have to be researched to actually determine if monetary value would change, would change things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public? I am seeing none. So again, Dr. Miasis, John Ferris, Carrie Nie, I mean, your whole team has worked incredibly hard, and we do appreciate the budget presentation. I am now going to turn to the Town Administrator Fiscal Year '23 Budget Recommendations.
We're all the way down to number four on the agenda, Joe. Flying.
Before I do, I just want to make sure that, I would ask any committee chair who would like to adjourn, just signal me. Otherwise, I'm just going to continue through the, through our agenda. So I'm sorry, Tom. Go ahead.
So we didn't have, advisory committee didn't have us on its agenda tonight to hear this part, so.
What about the Warren article discussion?
No. We're going to recess and go into our own meeting.
You're on one Thursday night with the advisors.
Yeah. Advisers hearing the school Warren articles on Thursday, and we're going over to conduct our own hearings on some other items tonight. So I am going to put the advisory committee into recess for a couple of minutes, and we will reconvene in the AdCom meeting Zoom link that's on our agenda.
Good to see you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody.
Okay, Tom, let's proceed with the fiscal year '23 budget recommendations.
All right. Well, good to go. Michelle, do you want to bring up that slide? So this slide is the sum total of our FY23 additional requests, which are above, items above the Level Service budget message that was, that I issued way back when. So I'll walk through each of these, and this is my priority order. So these, this is the order in which I am asking for funding, to the extent it's available. The first is a new elections poll pad. Carol has requested this as a new tool for additional voting capacity. Fire paramedic school tuition, this is because we're having difficulty hiring enough firefighters right now. We are, we're thinking about lowering our requirement of hiring paramedics only, and perhaps hiring EMS or EMTs, and then subsequently requiring that they reach a paramedic training within a period of time of having been hired. And then, obviously, we would, we would need school tuition for facilitating that. So that's what that, for So that's what that $40,000 is for. The sustainability coordinator, I know our, uh, the select board has heard, uh, this request, um, in the past at, at a meeting or two. Um, this is a position that would help us understand our needs from an environmental standpoint, uh, townwide. And I think that the, well, I know that the way I'm proposing to, uh, facilitate this position in year one. So year FY23 would be to, uh, uh, I'm proposing a shared position with the town of Cohasset. That would be one third funded by the town of Cohasset and two thirds funded by the town of Hingham. And the subsequent hours would be assigned accordingly. Um, I've spoken with the town manager in Cohasset and he is very excited about that solution as it would give us both an opportunity to, um, to evaluate the, the need and to identify, uh, the best possible, uh, place to, to assign that, that position. The public works part-time office assistant. Right now, the Weir River Water System has in their, uh, funding a, a part-time position available in their budget. I have asked them to hold off on hiring that position in the hopes that this position could be funded. This would be an additional part-time office assistant to work for the public works and be paid by the Hingham DPW. That would be a 50/50 share between the Weir River Water System Enterprise Fund and the DPW budget. Uh, this would allow us to, to add one full-time person to our, um, to our clerical staff at the DPW. This person would sit upstairs, uh, where the DP, where the Weir River Water System Superintendent sits and where the town engineer sits and hope, I'm hopeful that it would, uh, add necessary capacity to both of those, uh, roles. So again, a shared position. The next, the next item is a part-time grant writer. This position, I, I think is, you know, this is had been on the, had been a perennial request for a number of years, uh, back, uh, when my predecessor Ted Alexiatus was putting forward budgets. And I had put this forward for a couple of years when I first, uh, came into the role in 2017. And, um, and it was never funded, but I think that there's, uh, perhaps some clarity in the value of the position now. Um, a lot of, uh, a lot of grants will, will allow for administrative funds as part of their grant. That could help to offset the cost of the, of the grant writer position. I am advocating for this at a 20-hour, um, per week, um, start, a starting point. And we would evaluate again after year one to see if this is the appropriate number of hours. Uh, the recreation, uh, townwide turf maintenance, uh, this is for a, this is for, this is to extend the maintenance program that we all started last year. That's working so well under Mark Thorell and the rec department's, um, uh, management. This is, uh, what we, what we didn't do as part of that program is, if that is to tackle the needs on just outside of all the fields. So the benches, the, the, the gate, the, the fence lines, all of that stuff gets so overgrown with weeds during the course of the year that a lot of times you can't, uh, kids can't use the fields properly because the benches or the, or the, um, or the backstops and, and the outfield fences are all so overgrown, it's difficult to, um, to see where they are. So what we're proposing here is $27,600 to help us twice a year cut back the, the, uh, overgrowth in those situations. I'm also, uh, asking for, as my, uh, seventh overall priority, an assistant town engineer. The town engineer, uh, office had been recreated, re, rethought about three years ago. And, uh, at the time, we took four positions and turned them into one and then split out some duties into, uh, that used to be dealt with out of the engineering office and reassigned them elsewhere in town government. I do think that the, um, as I, as that position, and I said at the time that we needed to evaluate the role of the town engineer. Uh, I have certainly been doing that for the last couple of years. We've been very lucky in, uh, the hiring of our existing town engineer, JR Fry, who is fantastic, does excellent work and has a, an amazing work ethic. Um, however, he is, uh, he is pulled in many different directions, whether it's the Route 3A redevelopment or the bathhouse, uh, project, any of the road repavement jobs, um, buildings, uh, he acts as the project manager on a number of town projects. There's a lot to that role. So I think, uh, it would be, it's the appropriate time to think about expanding the capacity of that department and by adding an assistant town engineer. The historic preservation, uh, is, I'm requesting an additional $3,000. This was an annual $2,000 item in the, um, in the historic preservation budget in the past. So Andrea Young manages this, but $2,000 just wasn't enough to get the professionals that we needed to evaluate our historic markers and monuments. So we, I'm proposing we up that by $3,000 to, in order to be able to provide the service properly. Uh, human resources is looking to expand, um, their employee training capacity. This would be for things like sensitivity training, et cetera. And I think that, uh, that would certainly be appropriate to professionalize those services. That's a $2,000 item. The harbor master is proposing, uh, an additional $3,000 in order to, uh, facilitate, uh, easier access to, um, to the town landing and boat ramps and, uh, and floats. Now the, now the larger items. So the fire department has, is split across four, um, four shifts. And those shifts are each manned with minimum manning capacities. Those minimum mannings are, are designed to put X number of firefighters on each of the apparatus that we have in the event of a call. In, in discussions with the chief, it's been, uh, highlighted that the NFPA, which is the, uh, a standards, uh, organization for, um, for firefighters nation, nationally, uh, has recommended a higher level of minimum manning than we currently provide. So this, for these four additional firefighters allows us to increase our minimum manning by one firefighter per shift. So that's why we're asking for four firefighters. That comes at a cost of $355,826. That is all inclusive of their gear and training and, and the like that, that goes along with hiring a firefighter. It's a very similar situation with the police officers. Um, you've all seen, I think, the, the slide in, in recent weeks that we've shown where, um, the number of calls for service has skyrocketed while the number of, um, of, um, uniformed police officers has actually decreased over the last decade or so. I think that, uh, adding one officer per shift, which is why I'm asking for three officers, uh, makes sense. Uh, and that comes at a cost of $211,695. Again, that is fully inclusive of training and gear and, um, uh, clothing and the like. The police overtime, uh, item, $40,000 was requested by the chief. Frankly, until we fix our, um, our existing, um, staffing problems over the police department, which we in large part have, and folks are, we have a lot of, um, we've hired a lot of young officers that are currently in, uh, in, in academy. So hopefully they all come out of academy and join the force and, and, and continue on with their career. But until that all starts to happen, we are short-staffed. And, uh, the $40,000 overtime increase was not going to be sufficient for the overtime requests anyway. And I didn't want to, um, I didn't want to work that number into their permanent overtime budget because I do think we can fix this problem eventually, um, with, uh, with proper manning and, and fully staffing our existing openings. And then I spoke with Susan Sarny, who was originally requesting, uh, $9,300 for some flu shots, but she's found an alternate, um, funding source for that, uh, since that request was originally submitted. So those are my, uh, those are my, the, uh, budget requests, additional requests. And like, again, they are in priority order as the advisory committee deems, um, funding is available.
Tom, thank you. Um, Liz, any questions?
Thank you, Tom. Uh, just, just a comment really. Um, it was helpful for me to hear the full municipal budget requests, um, from each department. And then, you know, to see your prioritized list, Tom. So thank you. I know this isn't the normal process, but I think it, it is a good way for us to understand what the needs are from within the departments and, and what those department heads feel that they need. Um, I think this helps us make good decisions. Um, so obviously, you know, we have to figure out the sustainable budget and, and, you know, what, what makes sense over the next zero to five years. But, um, it's, it's helpful to see it this way. So thank you.
Welcome. Go Ramsey.
Uh, just two quick questions, Tom. I remember, I do remember Chief Murphy talking to us about, um, uh, some issues with the lack of paramedics on the department. Uh, do you know how much, uh, with the 40 grand for school tuition? How many paramedic qualified firefighters would that get us?
You know, it, it would, he, he was calculating that number to, um, to offset the train, the necessary training, I believe, for two EMTs if we were to hire them. I, I, I don't, please don't quote me on that number. That's what I'm, that's what I'm remembering. Uh, I can certainly find out for him and email you tomorrow.
I remember that was a, that was a personnel ask of his, um, a couple of months ago. Okay. Um, the other question, and you know, maybe I need to speak to you, Mark, more about this, but you know, I, with the, with the 27.6 for the, the turf, um, certainly we, we put a lot, well, good amount of money into the turf program last year. You know, quite a bit of it. I, I would, would hope that that money would cover the trimming around backstop and benches, certainly in need here. I mean, I've been on those fields and that grass gets very high around the backstops, particularly when it's raining. And this, I've always had a concern about, you know, tick-borne illnesses and everything with that grass being so high. But I wonder if we can figure out a way to have, who, you know, get that trimming done with the folks we have already out there rather than adding to it. But, you know, maybe I can talk to Mark more about it. Maybe I'm not seeing the big picture there, but.
Yep, happy to, happy to coordinate a discussion, Bill, at your, at your request.
Appreciate it.
And Tom, I, I don't have a question, but an observation, which is I would place a high priority on the grant writer, um, as we proceed. And there are increased federal state funds and perhaps other private funds available. Uh, it, I think it's just extremely important that we have someone focused on that and securing the, uh, appropriate funding for the town. So I, I appreciate, uh, that it's in your, in your list. Uh, I might bump it up in priority, but, uh, uh, again, I appreciate that, uh, you've put it in. Uh, so I will turn to members of the public who have questions on the town administrator's budget priorities for fiscal year 23. If you've got a question, raise your hand and then, uh, please, uh, indicate your name and address. I am seeing none. So then I will move to the next item on our agenda, which is the 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article Discussion. And we will begin with Article X, which is the high school tennis court rehabilitation. John, you began that in your earlier presentation. John Ferris, if you could continue, please.
Yes, and, um, also Mark Thorell is on as well. So this is a joint article between the record department and the school, um, and the school committee. And it's, uh, an article for the reconstruction of six tennis courts at the, at the high school, um, to put in, uh, post-tension, uh, tennis courts, uh, post-concrete. Is it, what's attention back? Can you, can you say?
Post-tension concrete surface.
That's right. Yeah. So, thank you. And it, so the, the, the trade-off between that is an asphalt could be a little bit cheaper, but these post, uh, the, um, well, I got this. The, the post-tension concrete is, it has a longer life and an overall lower cost of, uh, of, of ownership when it comes down to it. Asphalt would go about 15 years and this, this post-tension concrete will last 25 years and require less maintenance over time. They'll still need to be painted and stuff, but, um, asphalt will probably experience the same type of cracking that is going on now and, and, and there's heaving over by the posts. Um, several years back in 2012, we, there was proposals when we were doing the field project. We were looking at it to, uh, replace the tennis courts as well, but, um, we didn't want to bite off the, you know, at that time, the reconstruction cost might've been like some $400,000. But what we ended up doing instead was a resurfacing, um, using a right-way method or an armor-type method, which basically fills, it cleans up the court, fills the cracks and then covers it with a fabric and then paints over it and, uh, and, and, and they look like brand new courts and you get, you know, some good usage out of them for a year or so, two years. And then you have to do a few repairs on them because some, uh, the cracks, some new cracks may surface. Um, and then over the years, like, you know, we're seven years deep now. Well, well, probably almost nine years deep now. You know, the, the, the existing cracks will resurface. Um, so they're, they're really beyond their useful life. So this is an article. Um, it's also to give some fuel to the, the new, um, turf management committee that was put out, or turf management group that was put out last year. Um, you know, they've been out there, uh, doing some tremendous work, uh, on the school grounds as well as the other grounds. So, um, you know, we thought that it would be appropriate to do an article and, and give that group some life. So, um, you know, this, uh, $864,000 is a good investment for the town.
Great. Uh, thank you, John. Uh, Michelle, do you want to put up, uh, I know we've got a couple of pictures and perhaps John, I'm sorry, uh, Mark can walk us through, uh, what we're seeing.
Sure. So, yeah, earlier today, I emailed Michelle a few pictures. Um, so along the mid-court lines of the courts, there's quite a few, not only cracks, but the surface itself is unsettled and, and not even. Um, I talked to the high school athletic director and for their game play, um, they're not allowed to use one of the six courts. And I wouldn't be surprised come this spring if they lost another court. So we're, we're real, we are really at, as a town, at a point where we really need to, um, invest in these courts um, and, and get, and get them renovated. Um, in case anyone's wondering, what exactly is a post-tension concrete, uh, court? Post-tensioning is a method of reinforcing concrete with high-strength steel strands typically referred to as tendons. While concrete is strong in compression, it is weak in tension. Steel is strong under forces of tension. So combining the two elements results in the creation of strong concrete components. Post-tensioning can help create innovative concrete components that are thinner, longer and stronger when compared to asphalt. And what are the benefits, uh, with post-tensioned concrete courts? Uh, they reduce and eliminate control joints and resist and prevent cracking thanks to the compression that is induced in the concrete by pre-stressing the steel tendons in it. This will provide a sturdy, sturdy and durable playing surface that can withstand the rigors of constant use. And post-tensioned concrete courts are resistant to settling and heaving caused by the natural breathing of soils. Heat, moisture and cold weather do not negatively affect concrete courts. As a result, there is no structural cracking and some companies even offer a 20-year crack-free guarantee. Um, so as John mentioned, although the cost is higher in the, in the beginning over the life expectancy of the court, I, I think it's, uh, financially prudent to, um, go with the, the higher quality in the beginning and not have downtime for maintenance throughout the life and then to not have to renovate the court in about 15, uh, years down the road. Um, so I, I do think it's worth it for the town to go with the post-tensioned concrete option.
Mark, what is the useful life expected?
Some of these companies are saying 20 years without a crack. So I would expect the life expectancy to be 20 to 25 years plus.
Okay. Liz, any questions?
Um, no, no questions about the project. I've seen the condition of the courts. Um, so certainly support this. Um, and I appreciate the research you've obviously done, Mark, to, to figure out the best solution. Um, just one question about the funding. Is, is this something, John, that the, um, athletic revolving fund could be used for?
Um, the athletic revolving account, we were, it's, uh, reserving some of that for the turf. So I mean, that would be, um, you know, I, I think that would be a decision by the school, uh, committee. But I mean, it certainly is, um, you know, an athletic facility.
Okay. I don't think it affects this discussion or vote, but just something to, to consider.
Thank you. Bill, any questions?
Uh, just a couple of comments, just to, to give a little more background on this initiative. So, uh, so, so Vicky Donglin, and I don't see her on the call tonight, but, uh, Vicky and Mark, um, kind of approached me about, um, you know, after the success of the, the fields made. you know, after the success of the, the field's maintenance project last spring and, and the great job Mark did with it in the fall, talked about, you know, what's the next step here with the field's maintenance study and how can we continue to gain momentum? And Vicki mentioned we should look at the courts. So, and you know, what do you think about that? And I went out there, I looked at it and I agree that their, their time has come. So we reached out to Carrie and Ness and we had a couple of conference calls. We included John Ferris in that as well. And you know, I really think it is time to, to, to get these courts done. I, I think they're at the point where high school athletes may get hurt on these courts if they continue to use them in the shape that they're in. So fully support the article and I look forward to advocating for the passage of the article town meeting.
Great. Any member of the public with questions on Article X? I am seeing none. And just responding, I think it was to Elizabeth's point, Article X talks about raising and appropriating borrow or transfer from available funds. So the source of funds is not predetermined in this article. I am prepared to accept the motion on Article X. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Ray, sorry, I didn't see you.
Thanks, Joe. Ray ST's ninety-two Fort Hill Street. So just, just a brief comment, and as John mentioned, these courts were last refurbished in a major way ten years ago as part of Phase One of the High School Fields Project, twenty-twelve. It was done at the same time as the track was done. And I just wanted to point out that we were, as a school committee, when I was a member then, we were kind of talked into by the prior town engineer into going a, a less expensive route in terms of renovating those courts. Looking at the pictures and seeing them in person before the snow came, they're in about a similar condition as they were ten years ago before they were refurbished. And we had an opportunity to spend a little bit more money at that time and didn't. And that's what happens when you kind of, you know, make, make a decision that may not be the best decision. At the time, it might be, makes sense financially, but in the long term, here we are ten years later, having to redo the courts in a much more expensive fashion. And I'm encouraged to hear that, you know, this new process will have a much more, a longer useful life. Because I think this is the way we have to approach our assets in this town. Quick fixes, when we're spending good money after bad, aren't, aren't necessarily the good way to go. So I'm, I'm really happy to see that we're approaching this in, in a kind of a long-term fashion to do a, a really valuable renovation to, you know, a tremendous asset of the town that'll be hopefully, you know, in better shape for, for many years to come. So thank you for this.
Thank you, Ray. Now I do not see anyone else. So is there a motion on Article X?
I make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article X.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, aye. Approved. We move now on to Article Y, which is the Plymouth River School Windows Project, the funding source. And John Ferris, I believe you will lead us on this discussion.
Yes, thank you. So the, the, if, Joe, you may recall, back in September, I think we were working with the MSBA. Last year, we did take a similar vote to, you know, authorize the three point, three million nine hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars for the Plymouth River project. And that amount was actually gotten by the, an estimate from a designer that we had in, in progress before we went to town meeting in May. And it, you know, received unanimous approval. However, the article was worded such that it required a debt exclusion. And I think what we determined later was that nobody had any intention of ever using, doing a debt exclusion of this money. So we sort of changed the vote such that the school committee took a vote in September to actually appropriate from their FY twenty-two operating budget the amount of three million nine hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars to apply towards this product, project, really in satisfaction of an MSBA vote requirement. So what this warrant title, article is intended to do is to correct the funding source for that article such that, and we work with John Coffin with this. So John has written the article using similar MSBA language, which is almost a repeat of what we did last year, but there's no debt exclusion language in the article. So what this will do is, is correct the funding source and then subsequent to that, I would be working with the school committee and, and John Coffin will help me have a subsequent vote for the school committee to sort of retract their appropriation of, of that money. So it's, it's basically a correction of, of last year's vote.
Yep. I recall that, John, you and I worked together on this. And this is, this is nothing new. This is really just correcting the funding source. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Bill.
Not familiar with the issue and comfortable with it.
Any member of the public with questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion on Article Y.
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article Y.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, aye. Approved. We move to Article Z. Article Z, which is the five-year lease for the special ed school transportation vehicles. And John, you are up again.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so this is a majority vote approval. Mass procurement laws require that any, any lease that's, any contract really that's over three years needs a majority vote approval. So we've, in the past, we've leased big yellow buses for five years. We've also leased some escapes for five years. There's a difference in those leases, the big yellow buses, you don't own them after five years, but you could buy them out. They, the, the escapes and, and these vehicles, the seventy vans, after five years, you do own them. So you don't have any buyouts if you make the lease payments and you own them. So this is, uh, spreading the payment out for five years for those new bus, the new vans, which are replacement vans for surplus vans that we have that we put into operation this year so that we can make those a permanent part of the fleet. And they, we're presuming two vans will be leased and they'll cost about thirteen, one forty-two a piece. We've got a quote of about twenty-six thousand dollars. Of course, when we go there to put the order in, that may vary slightly, but you know, it's, it's been difficult getting vehicles. So we won't be able to order these until after we have the money accessible to us in, in July, but hopefully we'll be able to get them next year sometime. So this is a request to, to ask the town, will they allow us to enter into a five-year lease?
Right. So, so as I understand it, the reason this is a warrant article is not for the dollar amount, which is thirteen, about thirteen thousand for each vehicle, but it's for the length of the lease.
Correct.
Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you, John.
Bill.
No questions.
Do any members of the public have questions on this? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept a motion on Article Z.
I make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article Z.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. Approved, and we move to Article EE.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you, John. Appreciate all your effort.
John.
This is the Foster School Funds for Pre-Construction Costs and to Open the Town Meeting Warrant for Submission of a Revised Article for the Foster Elementary School, and we are honored to have Ray ST's with us.
Joe, Ray ST's ninety-two Fort Hill Street, speaking for the school building committee. So this is really just a, a formality. We needed to submit a warrant article prior to the January twentieth deadline, as you know, and we had not yet received a response from the MSBA upon review of our proposed warrant article. Of course, they always have comments to warrant articles. And before you, is a slightly revised article that merely adds kind of required standard MSBA language with respect to the useful life of the building and, and the, you know, the, the, the nature of the MSBA's grant program of things of that nature. So the, the substance of the article has not changed. It is for interim funding for the Foster School Project to get us through design development and an early bid package this fall prior to full funding of the project construction at a special town meeting, hopefully this fall.
Yeah, this is exactly consistent with what we previously had seen. I have no questions, Liz.
No questions. Thank you, Ray.
Bill.
No questions.
Do any members of the public have a question on Article EE? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion.
I will make a motion to open the town meeting warrant for submission of a revised article for Foster Elementary School and to recommend favorable action of Article EE.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. Approved. We are now through the twenty twenty-two annual town meeting warrants articles for this evening's discussion. We move to the Human Rights, oh, I'm sorry, Carrie.
Yeah, Joe, would you, would you mind if we adjourned the school committee?
We'd love you to stick around, but you're welcome to adjourn.
I'm planning to, but I just want to let everyone else go if they want to. But, and I also want to thank you on behalf of the committee, all of you, for your support of, of the warrant articles. It means a lot. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn the February eighth meeting of the Hangum School Committee.
I will make a motion.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you, Ness. All right, all in favor? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you very much. We are adjourned at nine twenty-three.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Really good to see you.
Good to see you.
John looks really happy.
He's, he's looking for some pies.
Right.
We'll get him some. Next item on our agenda is the Human Rights Commission. I know that we have Katie Sutton here. I don't know, Liz, if you'd like to introduce this discussion?
Yes, I think Katie Sutton and Andrew Turner are going to do a presentation on the Human Rights Commission.
Okay.
Go ahead, Katie.
Thank you, Liz. Hi, everybody. I'm going to apologize, I'm going to read because I'm not good at memorizing things. So the human.
Katie, if you don't mind, just beginning with your, your address, so we have it for the record?
Absolutely. Katie Sutton, two forty-five Levitt Street.
Thank you.
Human Rights Commissions exist in cities and towns across the United States and the world. They are based on the principle that every person has equal value and dignity, no matter who they are. They promote community awareness and equitable policies and practices to protect the rights of all citizens and serve as a resource to community members. In Massachusetts, there are nearly forty municipal-level human rights commissions doing this work across a range of models. A task force of the Hangham Unity Council, HUC, of which I am the chair, has examined many of these models with the goal of identifying which, if any, would best serve our community. Just quickly, the HUC is a nonpartisan grassroots citizens group formed in two thousand and nineteen with the goal of fostering a more diverse and inclusive community where all feel valued and respected. We have several active subcommittees that include a wide range of experiences professionally and personally, including attorneys, educators, parents, researchers, mental health care professionals, business professionals and members of various town committees and boards. Our active membership includes individuals who are both new to Hangum and those who've lived here for most or all of their lives, including persons of colors, members of the LGBTQIA+ community, persons with disabilities, persons of different faiths, seniors and individuals living in subsidized housing. Over the past years, the HUC has heard directly and indirectly of incidents of bias in Hangum. We have studied the need for and potential structure of a Human Rights Commission for Hangum, and we've met with representatives of Human Rights Commissions throughout the Commonwealth to learn about their experiences and initiatives, including regularly attending monthly meetings of the Massachusetts Association of Human Rights Commissions. Identity-based mistreatment and discrimination occurs everywhere in the U.S. and Hangum is no exception. Such incidents have been reported here in our schools by our faith communities and on social media. Friends and neighbors of HUC members have shared accounts of incidents and some individuals in the group itself have been targets of such incidents. While various Hangum entities play a crucial role in ensuring the safety and well-being of Hangum residents, there is currently no civic body charged with ensuring that programs and initiatives are in place to protect human rights, promote diversity, equity and inclusion and provide resources to our neighbors. In two thousand and nineteen, the town of Hangum undertook a master planning process that included a survey of residents about their concerns and values and several community vision sessions. Residents noted a lack of diversity in Hangum and expressed a desire to create a more inclusive community. Creating a, quote, "diversity, equity and inclusion" committee in this town was identified as Policy one point six in the draft master plan that was released in spring of two thousand and twenty-one. The Human Rights Commission that we are proposing, we believe would satisfy that policy goal. We also want to acknowledge the town is currently facing massive budgetary constraints and point out that, as currently proposed, no funding is being requested for this commission. Furthermore, as my colleague Andrew will outline in a moment, the structure of the proposed commission would involve membership by representatives from key town departments and committees such as police and public schools, as well as a high school student. We believe this will enhance communication within our town across various stakeholders, foster more open and transparent dialogue and significantly benefit our community as a whole. Establishing a Human Rights Commission would align Hangum with benchmark towns including Arlington, Belmont, Concord, Carlisle, Framingham, Lexington, Maynard, Needham, Newton, Wayland and Winchester, and clarify that Hangum is a town that values and respects the dignity of all persons. And I'm going to turn it over to Andrew to finish up.
Hi, folks. Good evening. My name's Andrew Turner. I live at one seven two Wampatuck Road in Hangum. I'm going to quickly review the responsibilities of the commission and also talk about the composition of the team. So firstly, the commission shall have the following charge and responsibilities. There are three. One, develop opportunities to build community awareness concerning human rights, including but not limited to diversity, equity and inclusion within the town of Hangum and beyond through educational programs, summits, panels, celebrations and other community events. Number two, develop programs and initiatives and provide community resources to promote human rights, including but not limited to diversity, equity and inclusion within the town of Hangum. And lastly, number three, annually and more often, as may be requested by the select board, provide written or verbal reports to the select board on commission activities. Those are the charges and responsibilities. Let me now talk about composition for a minute. There will be thirteen members total, eight members that are recommended by various leaders within the community, I'll go through those in a second, and five at-large members. The at-large members will be appointed by the select board, and I'll quickly, quickly review the composition of the recommended appointed members. As Katie mentioned before, these are members appointed by various leaders within the community. So one member recommended by the chief of police from the Hangum Police Department, one member recommended by the school committee from the Hangum Public Schools, one member recommended by the Council on Aging, one member recommended by the Commission on Disabilities, one member recommended by the Affordable Housing Trust, one member recommended by the Housing Authority, and one member recommended by the Recreation Commission. One member shall be a Hangum resident who is a high school student recommended by the school committee and appointed by the select board. In closing, I want to thank everyone for their attention this evening. Tonight, we urge the select board to take this opportunity to signal our town's commitment to supporting and protecting the rights of all who live, study, work or worship in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm, I have the proposal in front of me and I just want to read the purpose. It's the establishment of the commission represents the town of Hangum's commitment to support the rights of all persons in Hangum, to enjoy the free and equal exercise of their rights and privileges as secured by the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and of the United States, and to promote diversity, equity and inclusion within the town of Hangum. I think that purpose encapsulates exactly what we've just heard, and it really represents the commitment of this town. So I really appreciate this being moved forward. Um, so I really appreciate this being moved forward. I'm gonna start, I I have a question about the membership. Uh, is it the intention for this group to be composed only of residents of the town of Hingham?
Not if um uh the the at-large members, yes. Um, I think if they're, one of the other folks is is not a town of Hingham resident, that's totally fine.
So in other words, the the chief of police might appoint someone who, uh, you know, like a a state expert on things and and to bring that, bring that person on, they do not have to be a resident of the town.
Correct.
Right. And just to your um point about the the budget, I do know that it says, unfortunately, the members of the commission shall serve without compensation. So in fact, there there will be, as are most volunteer boards in the town. Um, so this will represent folks who really are committed uh and uh look forward to moving this uh to the next step. Liz, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Katie. Thank you, Andrew, for the thorough and thoughtful presentation. We appreciate the work of the group and you coming forward with this important concept, sharing the benchmark information and how human rights commissions operate in other municipalities across the Commonwealth. This is an important step as we create a welcoming and inclusive community and is very much aligned with the community vision outlined in the master plan, as you mentioned, Katie, um, as well as the recommended action to create a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. So thank you again to for your commitment to Hingham, and I certainly look forward to to have this move forward.
Bill?
Thank you, Katie, and thank you, Andrew. Uh, you we we looked at how uh commissions work in other towns, and I know they've been very successful, so looking forward to having uh success here as well. Thank you very much.
Are there members of the public with questions? Seeing none, um, this is uh the Human Rights Commission, I think, is an important initiative that I would be prepared to move forward with this evening, and uh I will accept the motion.
Make a motion to establish the town of Hingham Human Rights Commission as an advisory board to the select board in accordance with the attached document detailing the creation, purpose, and charge of said human rights commission.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe, it is unanimous, we have the Human Rights Commission established. Uh, the next step, we will be sending out uh talent bank notices so that uh residents can express their interest um and to serve on the commissions. Thank you all for your work. Very much appreciated.
Thank you so much. Thank you. That's great.
Tom?
Yes, sir. It's like a COVID.
We're finally gonna let John first off the hook, won't have to do something. Um, so we're gonna have you do the COVID nineteen update.
Sure. Thank you very much, Joe. This is a little bit of a long one, um, as we transition in a number of ways, so bear with me. Uh, just some data background. So the Department of Public Health is reporting that the seven-day average of confirmed COVID nineteen cases has declined substantially from four thousand eight hundred and three on January thirtieth to one thousand three hundred and twenty-five on February seventh, and that is state statewide. Statewide hospitalizations have fallen from two thousand two hundred and two on January twenty-eighth to fifteen hundred, uh, one thousand five hundred and seventy on February seventh. And the latest data show the Hingham case count declining as well. The DPH is reporting one hundred and eighteen new COVID nineteen cases in Hingham during the fourteen-day period ending one twenty-two. Uh, during the fourteen-day period ending one twenty-nine, the DPH is reporting twenty seventy-one cases in Hingham. So seventy-one down from one eighteen um over the course of a week. It is important to note that many residents are now taking home-based testing, which is most often not reported and therefore not in these statistics. As a result, we are assuming that the actual number of positive cases is higher than the statistics show. The overall vaccination rate for Hingham is now eighty-three percent for fully vaccinated individuals. Further, forty-nine percent of Hingham residents have received a booster dose, and according to the DPH, sixty-eight percent of Hingham residents ages five to eleven are now fully vaccinated as well. So regarding our temporary COVID nineteen regional testing site, we do continue to conduct a regional COVID nineteen drive-through testing site for now uh in partnership with Cohasset, Hull, and Situate at three thirty-five Lincoln Street in Hingham. The testing center will be open on Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from seven AM to four PM, and PCR tests are currently available at no cost to the public. Residents and employees of the four communities will continue to have priority appointment access from seven to eleven AM daily. Online pre-registration is required, and no test will be administered without an appointment, and all participants will be notified of test results by email. I wanted to note that I am disappointed with the testing, with the test site performance in general, and we have put the vendor on notice regarding needed improvements. Uh, if the vendor successfully meets my requirements, we will allow the site to remain open, though potentially under new operating procedures. Uh, and as those operating procedures are defined, we will update those on our website. We go regarding some COVID nineteen at-home test kit distributions. Uh, so the town has received over sixteen thousand rapid antigen test kits from Plymouth County. The town is planning to distribute these test kits in uh two Hingham residents, and those uh distribution days will be as follows: Sunday, February thirteenth, from one to four PM, and Tuesday, February fifteenth, from one to four PM. And again, as I noted last week, the uh, we do recognize that Sunday is Super Bowl Sunday. However, the one to four PM window uh should allow folks to get out, uh, get their tests, and then still get back in time for the game at six thirty. We will distribute the kits at our testing site at three thirty-five Lincoln Street. Uh, two kits, holding a total of four tests, will be distributed to drivers of vehicles with a driver's license showing a Hingham address. We are finalizing details, including a website posting and press release, which will be available tomorrow on the website. Um, regarding some, the restaurant outdoor table service. The outdoor table service program in effect during the COVID nineteen state of emergency will expire on April first, two thousand twenty-two. While there is a possibility that the legislation may be further extended, we currently anticipate that our zoning regulations for restaurants will go back into effect in April. We encourage all restaurants that would like to maintain outdoor table seating areas approved during the the during the state of emergency to contact our community planning director, Emily Wentworth, for guidance on any permitting applications that may be required. A typical special permit does take some time, so restaurant operators should reach out now to Emily by phone at seven eight one eight zero four two three nine four or by email at wentworthee@hingham-ma.gov. Uh, all of all restaurant um restaurateurs who have been affected by the outdoor table service have been contacted at least twice by mail and uh and several and and in other ways as well. So if you know a restaurateur who would like to keep their outdoor table service program moving, please make sure that they reach out to the community, look to the town, rather. Hingham Schools Pediatric Vaccination Clinic. On March fifth, from nine AM to one PM, the Hingham Public Schools will conduct a vaccination clinic. Vaccinations will be available for eligible Hingham students. The clinic will be run by the state and make of uh available Pfizer and Moderna vaccine. Pre-registration is required, so tomorrow, Hingham Public Schools will provide clinic information and a link to parents and post this information on their website at hingamsschools.org. Regarding masking policies, uh, effective September seventh, twenty twenty-one, I instituted a COVID nineteen mask policy acting under Chapter two sixty-three of the Acts of twenty sixteen. Under my policy, all individuals age five and over, regardless of vaccination status, are required to wear a mask covering the nose and mouth when indoors in municipal facilities, with certain exceptions. This policy does not apply to Hingham Public Schools. I continue to monitor conditions and, in close coordination with our COVID command group, including Hingham's Executive Health Officer, are considering adjustments as improved conditions uh may allow. Regarding public health protocols, please continue to take precautions to protect yourself and others from COVID nineteen. As we all know, vaccination, wearing face coverings, practicing social distancing, and frequently washing hands, among other measures, help protect us all from COVID nineteen. On January seventh, twenty twenty-two, the Hingham Board of Health issued a health advisory strongly recommending the use of face coverings by all patrons, visitors, and employees within an indoor space open to the public in Hingham. The health advisory is directed to all visitors and employees within any indoor space in all public places, public housing, assisted living facilities, membership associations, and workplaces in Hingham. The CDC and the Mass DPH Guidance on Face Coverings can be found on their respective websites, and the Board of Health recommends the use of N ninety-five or KN ninety-five or a non-woven multi-ply surgical mask. Woven cloth masks, gaiters, and bandanas provide significantly less protection against the airborne respiratory virus. Also remember that any face covering should be fitted closely to one's skin to prevent unwanted gaps and leaks. And that's the report for the day, Joe.
So, thank you, Tom. That's, that was a lot you covered. Um, I just want to clarify two things. First, your comment about the uh mask policy, uh, it's true that your mask policy doesn't apply to the schools. The school committee has its own policy. Um, and so I didn't want to leave the impression that there was no mask policy for the schools. It is something that is in fact set by the school committee. Uh, second, I noticed that you gave the dates of Sunday and Tuesday for handing out the um the test kits. You're you're skipping over Valentine's Day on Monday. It would have been a nice thing to give, give you Valentine, but I guess uh the site is otherwise occupied, so it it won't be, we won't be handing them out on Valentine's Day.
Right.
Uh, Liz, any questions?
Thank you, Tom, for the report. Um, just a question about the restaurants. Do do we have a sense of how many Emily has heard from?
I don't. I'm sorry. I can find out tomorrow. I don't know, maybe Art Robert might know.
I don't have that. We'll track it down for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Welcome.
Bill?
Um, just, but I I do know that several restaurants have come in with special permit applications, um, which is great. So I I don't know total, but I know a couple of coming, and uh, I've seen them on their ZBA agenda, so it's great. Um, no, no questions. They'll be on that. Thank you.
Yes, and I also am aware of of the applications coming in, so uh and we will reach out again to encourage uh restaurants to to make those applications. Any member of the public have questions on the COVID nineteen update? Seeing none, I will move to um appointments. And uh, I believe this evening we need to correct the vote that we took last time uh for the appointment for the library trustees. We used an incorrect uh term date for the appointment. Uh, I made the motion last time, so I'll make the motion this time to amend the vote taken on February third, twenty twenty-two regarding the appointment of Mona Paul to the Library Board of Trustees by changing the end date from June thirty, twenty twenty-four to June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe, aye. And now we move to a public comment on items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who have comments on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will move to town administrator select board reports, starting with Mr. Mayo.
Uh, not tonight. Thank you, Joe.
Michelle Montaguer?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Art Robert?
Nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
We all have respect for the late hour. Um, Liz Klein?
Just a quick reminder that the Sustainable Budget Task Force is holding office hours tomorrow, February ninth, at twelve noon via Zoom.
And I assume the Zoom link is posted on the town website?
It is. Yes.
Bill Ramsey?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Great. And I also have nothing this evening. Others congratulate all of us for a very productive evening. Appreciate it. And again, uh, congratulations. We have set up the um Human Rights Commission. Looking forward to getting that staff to moving forward. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all.